Are we including the gas station as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Just cuz.
No, the gas station is, if there's actually two boards.
Yep.
So, um, I need her to fix us. We were adding kind of what's happening now to them. And they had it backwards. They had the garage as the beauty salon and the hardware store as the cafe. So.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm about to fix that bit and then I'll send it out.
So.
How many do you have?
We have four and three.
Okay. Let everybody in.
Hold on, I'm coming too.
You're probably hanging the fourth.
I beat everybody.
Oh, okay.
And then I know, um.
Okay, you have a count staff only.
Oh, no, no.
Where?
We just.
Sign up.
What's that? Where does it say?
We do.
Oh.
No, we're not.
Where does it say count staff only?
On the, uh, board right by the door.
Oh, I think that's for the.
That's for events.
Yeah.
That's for events.
Oh, yeah, to keep you from getting dumb.
Yeah.
Um, I do Sean guys are in Charlotte are coming over from gigs.
So today.
In a couple minutes.
Okay. Hmm. Everybody's in, everybody's ready. And it is seven oh one. Okay. All right. We'll call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hi. Thank you very much. Okay, we called the order, the, um, town of Kensington council meeting for Wednesday, October eighth. Um, before we go further, I just want to announce that council member Lipter is not here. She is traveling, um, this week and unable to attend the meeting. Okay, um, moment of silence, is there anyone we should bring up? Probably the, the Anderson family. The, um, the funeral is Saturday. So, anyone else?
Maybe the other, also the other family that was affected by the other pedestrian death.
Mm hmm.
A bugbear smell. Bunga, Pracha, Patti.
Mm hmm.
And their family.
Okay. We can bow our heads. Okay, thank you very much. All right, we'll move down, uh, council, excuse me, you all received a copy of the minutes. I didn't see any edits. Um, I, if I can get a motion to approve.
Move that we approve the minutes from the September tenth town council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hold on a favor.
Hi. Night.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, um. Uh, Connor, do you want to, uh, introduce number one?
Yes. Um, so with us tonight online, we have two presenters, um, Kirsten Bozak, who's from the Maryland Department of Disabilities and Chris Rogers, who's with the Maryland Developmental Disabilities Council. They are here to talk about an initiative called Playgrounds for All, but to also to talk about the importance of inclusive play and inclusive playgrounds around the state of Maryland, and especially within Montgomery County, which has uh, surprisingly a bit of a dearth in inclusive playgrounds. And this will dovetail right into our ordinance and resolution section when we go to talk about um, proposed budget items for, um, enhancements to St. Paul Park. And so I think Alex, you have their slides.
Did you want to introduce him or?
So, yes, I'm gonna let Kirsten or Chris, if you all want to introduce yourselves and what your roles are with each of those agencies and and kind of what like M D O D's role is in the initiative and what the council's role is in the initiative, that would be terrific.
Yeah, wonderful. Thank you so much for, um, having Chris and I here tonight. I'm Kirsten Bozak. Um, kudos for you on saying my name correct. It's not often.
Chris, put me.
We should practice it.
Chris, put me very clearly.
That's great. Um, but yeah, thank you so much for having us here and allowing us time in what I know is probably a very busy council meeting, um, to talk about this initiative um, with you guys and why inclusive play is so important um, in our state as a whole and in Montgomery County especially. Um, so I don't want to dive too much into the presentation, but I am with the state of Maryland. I am with the Department of Disabilities. We are cabinet level office focused on cross disability policy. Um, we are unique in that we are the only cabinet level office on disability in the nation. Um, so we are unique that we have, um, a seat and the opportunity to meet with the governor pretty frequently and, and get our um, to him directly. Um, and so our role really, um, within this initiative is working on policy changes at the state level and at the local community level as well. Um, and supporting, um, a lot of what the D D Council does. And so I will turn it over to Chris to introduce himself. So thank you again for having us.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Kirsten, and, uh, thank you to, uh, council member Crimmins and, uh, everyone else here for, uh, allowing us to share a little bit about what we're doing. Um, I'm the Director of Engagement for the Maryland Developmental Disabilities Council. We are an independent state agency, uh, that creates change, uh, and improves the lives of people with developmental disabilities so they can live the lives they want uh, with the support they need. And, uh, recreation is a really important part of our state plan as it is for, uh, the Department of Disabilities and um, all recreation kind of starts when you're a kid and you're going out on the playground and there's a lot of benefits that come from, uh, you know, being able to play with, uh, you know, everyone around you. And so that's kind of where this project started and, uh, we're excited to share our work with you and, and talk a little bit about, uh, Montgomery County and Kensington.
I can see the slide deck. I don't know if this is the format it's normally in for your council meetings, um, but it looks like, um, I don't, maybe it is presentation mode, sorry.
Just fine, it just helps with navigation.
Awesome, perfect. Um, could you actually go back one slide for one second? Um, so again, I'm Kirsten. I forgot to mention I am the Director of Health and Behavioral Health Policy within the department. And, um, this work falls under my health portfolio, um, under our inclusive, uh, recreation. Um, but today we're here with you all. Again, thank you for the time, um, to discuss our Playgrounds for All initiative. And we really hope that at the end of this presentation, you have a better understanding of, um, inclusion, uh, access, accessible versus inclusive. Um, you have an understanding of what our framework is about and how to use the maps tool and, um, how you can put some of these ideas into practice in your own communities. Um, so on this slide here, we have an image of Laura's Place Playground in Howard County. Um, this is an inclusive playground that Howard County did, um, private and public funding for. It is a massive playground. We know not everyone has the budget for a playground quite this size, but if you ever have the opportunity to go, it has a lot of wonderful elements, um, and could be scaled to fit a playground, um, in your community. So, um, that is the picture on the side. Next slide. And here is a, uh, mission at the Department of, uh, Disabilities. We're changing Maryland for the better by promoting equality of opportunity, access and choice for Marylanders with disabilities. Um, and we have several photos on this slide, a family with a guide dog, uh, young woman holding her diploma, a young woman holding her, um, Special Olympics, uh, medals, and the final picture is the former Lieutenant Governor, uh, Lieutenant Governor Rutherford with an advocacy partner. Um, next slide.
So, um, as Kirsten said, this is a, a joint project between the Department of Disabilities and the Maryland Developmental Disabilities Council. I mentioned that we are an independent state agency. We are led by people with developmental disabilities and their family members. Um, our mission is to create change, uh, to make it possible for people with developmental disabilities to live the lives they want with the support they need. And our vision is that people with and without disabilities in Maryland live, learn, work, and play together. And, uh, playgrounds really, uh, ties in perfectly with our vision. Next slide.
So why did we pick playgrounds as this project evolved? Um, well, first and foremost, we were hearing a lot of, um, uh, feedback from constituents across the state of Maryland that there were not playgrounds in their communities for their families to, um, play at. And we know that there are lots of benefits to playing. You have the opportunity to develop social skills. You can try new things in a safe place. You can build independence. It develop, you can develop relationships, um, lots of positive factors go into those kind of early development um, stages of life and learning. And so they are kind of a critical component of growing up. Um, and we were hearing that Maryland needed more of these playgrounds. So we took that information and we started to think about how we could really impact change across the state. Um, and we worked with the D D Council and decided that we felt like we both had these shared goals on our state plans of inclusive recreation and health and how we could impact the state. And so we looked at, um, designing a framework, which was the first portion of our playground project. And so we spent almost over a year working on developing the framework, pulling resources, um, really getting up to speed on all of that. And we decided the framework was the first piece and we really wanted the framework to focus on the fact that while we appreciate that the ADA is around and provides us guidelines, the ADA or the Americans with Disabilities Act is really a, a minimum standard. And with this project, we are hoping to go beyond the minimum standard and really aim for inclusion, which goes a step beyond what is compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Next slide.
So, um, as Kirsten said, our, we now have this Playgrounds for All website, which we launched, uh, in mid-September, just a few weeks ago. And, um, it's built off of the initial framework that we released in twenty twenty-three and is made up of three different sections. So the first section is just about, uh, what inclusive playgrounds are. We define, um, what they are, talk about, uh, the difference between accessible and inclusive, uh, which I'll go into more detail on in a moment. And then talks about the benefits of inclusive playgrounds, you know, why it's important for, um, children with and without disabilities to play together and build those social connections and uh, have a shared space in their community where everyone feels welcome. Uh, next in the website is a series of, uh, toolkits, resources for planning and designing and implementing playgrounds in your community. This is designed, uh, both for local officials, uh, like yourselves, as well as for community members who uh, may want to start a grassroots effort to, uh, create playgrounds. So there's something in there that's kind of tailored for everyone who would be a part of this process. And then finally, we, uh, compiled a list of publicly accessible playgrounds that we feel, uh, provide meaningful inclusion opportunities for everyone. So that means everyone with and without disabilities, uh, can access everything on the playground. And we'll go into more detail on the map later on. Uh, next slide. Thank you. So, uh, accessible is not the same as inclusive. If, uh, you take a look at these two slides, uh, or two photos, the one on the left, uh, is kind of an older playground. It has mulch surfacing around it. It has, uh, an older structure with stairs going up, some basic swings, uh, grass all around it. And then the one on the right has unitary surfacing, as we call it, ported in place rubber. It has a ramp up onto the structure and shade. It has, uh, a merry-go-round that's at grade at ground level. And so you can see there's a big difference between these two playgrounds. Um, but the one on the left, you know, by could be considered ADA accessible. So the ADA says that engineered wood fiber, which is a type of mulch, uh, when maintained properly is accessible. Um, if you ask someone in a manual wheelchair to go over, uh, engineered wood fiber, they will probably disagree with that statement. Um, and so that's kind of the, the basis for a lot of our work, that there really are a lot of playgrounds out there that meet the basic accessibility standards, but not many that are truly inclusive. Um, and the playground is only inclusive if everyone can access all parts of it without a challenge. So it's not inclusive if someone's going to be stuck on the sidelines or if they're stuck at ground level because they can't get up onto the structure. Or they're stuck watching, uh, their friends on the swings because there's no adaptive swing. Um, or if you know, there, there's no pathway for them to even get to the playground. Um, so we, we like this photo on the right because it highlights a, a few different things that we, uh, are really aiming for in inclusive playgrounds, obviously with the caveat that, uh, that e- every community is different and we're not looking for the same exact thing in every community. It's really whatever works best for you guys. Um, but, you know, we have the unitary surfacing. We have a ramp up onto one of the structures. So, um, you know, a child or an adult in a wheelchair or using a walker or other mobility device would be able to get up and access some of those things. Um, we also talk about the importance of sensory friendly equipment, uh, which there isn't a great example in this, uh, either photo here, but something like music making equipment or uh, something that spins, uh, that, you know, a little ground level device that someone can spin that uh, meets some of the, the sensory needs of, uh, you know, some people as well. So we really think that inclusive playgrounds like the one on the right, uh, help foster independence and risk management. And they promote health and wellness, uh, providing, uh, opportunities to be active. And they increase social participation, allow everyone to socialize together, uh, which is, you know, really, really important for, especially in childhood development. Next slide.
Sorry, I had to mute myself because my dog is going wild. Um, so on the page here, you can see the front of our, um, framework, which is the document we created to start this project. This document was really created, um, for locals, municipalities, organizations and individuals to use as a starting point, um, to advocate for the need for more, um, inclusive playgrounds in their communities and gives some starting information on how to make these inclusive spaces. Um, it gives tips and resources and it gives recommendations on how to engage your disability community, which is very critical and something we talk about a lot, and we will talk about it more later on. Next slide. Oh, Chris, is freedom of choice me? Sorry. Um, so on the slide here, we, um, uh, talk about one of the examples that we include in our framework, which is freedom of choice. Um, and freedom of choice, you might be thinking like, what does that mean? It really is the idea that a person has the choice of choosing where and how they want to play and who they want to play with. And, um, we focused on this because oftentimes, um, individuals with disabilities don't really have a choice um, in the playgrounds that they play at or the play equipment that they can play with, um, when there are these barriers, um, to play. So, um, having a bank of swings altogether, um, with a wheelchair accessible swing or a um, accessible swing that has extra, um, trunk mobility support is going to allow people with disabilities and people without disabilities to play together all in one section as opposed to having maybe the accessible swings, um, in a section completely by themselves. Uh, or where we sometimes see it where the swing might be even outside of the playground or in a different section of the park. Um, and this means that they're not getting to engage with their peers in the same way. They have to go to a different section of the playground or separate from what their peers are doing at that time. And so freedom of choice is ensuring that when you're designing these play spaces, you're really thinking about, are they going to have the options to play with their peers? Um, when we design where the swings are, are they going to have options of slides to go down that? Are they going to have options of sensory equipment to play with? Um, so they're not limited to one section or one single solitary item on the playground. Um, and then bigger concepts of freedom of choice are these ideas that, um, if there is not an inclusive playground in your community, then your community is going to go outside and find those play spaces in other counties or cities. And so we really want there to be freedom of choice that families can play in their own communities with the people that they're around and working and playing with. And so, um, freedom of choice is a small idea, but also a very big idea too. Next slide.
So, uh, another example from our toolkits, uh, is focuses on universal design, which is the process of creating something to be as functional as possible for as many people as possible. So when it comes to playgrounds, uh, that means creating a space that benefits everyone, uh, is safe and enjoyable for everyone. Um, and, you know, makes everyone feel welcome. So there's seven different principles of universal design. We won't get into all of them, uh, right now, just for the sake of time. Um, but one of the main ones is equitable use. Uh, so that means the space is, uh, usable to people of all different abilities. So in this example on the screen here, there, it's an overhead shot of a playground. Um, and you can see that there's a large ramp kind of through the back center of the uh, playground up onto the large structure that's on the right. And so that, that's the type of thing that benefits everyone, you know, obviously. You know, we're, we're talking about mobility, uh, for people who use wheelchairs or walkers, but also think about a mom with young kids in a stroller, who's able to now go up onto the playground and interact with her kids up there and watch her kids up there while, you know, keeping her baby in the stroller with her. Uh, so this kind of universal design, uh, really benefits everyone. Uh, simple and intuitive use, uh, is another important one. So making it clear where, uh, the playground is, where to go. Um, what, uh, spaces there are available. Some other examples of universal design in this photo that we like, um, all of the swings are together on the left-hand side. So we have the um, traditional swings and the adaptive swings next to each other, like, uh, Kirsten was mentioning in the last slide. Um, we have a large shaded area, uh, both over the main playground structure and then also over another structure to the left, which, uh, is calming, it's, uh, welcoming. It allows people to play and enjoy themselves without overheating. Um, and the big thing that we really, uh, believe in is that on an inclusive playground, all of the coolest parts or the most exciting parts of the playground are accessible to everyone. That's a big part of universal design. And, you know, I think that's really true in this playground. You have the, uh, big ramp up, so that means everyone can access it. Um, you know, there's lots of different things to do up on that main structure. So if you're looking for something that's more, uh, sensory focused, there's activities up there. If you want to take the slide down, you can do that. Looks like there's a roller slide. Uh, so the, this, I think, is a really good example of universal design and how it is welcoming and inclusive of everyone. Next slide.
And the final, um, uh, section that we're going to talk about from our framework tonight is, um, forming a committee. And this is a point that we talk about a lot, and that is primarily that you should be including your, um, um, community, people with disabilities in the conversation and the planning, designing, um, and building of these playgrounds. They are going to be the best, um, uh, storytellers of what's going to work for them or what's not going to work for them. Um, and they may have solutions that you don't even think about, and, um, they know their disability best. So it's really important that you include them in these conversations. Um, and the more that you include them, the more value they're going to see in these play spaces when, when they're designed, um, and they'll be used. And that's a really important part. And so, um, you know, we both at the Department of Disabilities and the council are always happy to kind of weigh in on things, but we would always prefer to connect you with your, um, disability community, um, partners and individuals with experience to, um, help you with this project. Next slide. So putting it all together, this is a playground here in Maryland. This is, um, sorry, Chris, this is one of your playgrounds, so I forgot the name.
It's, uh, John, John Lancaster Park in St. Mary's County.
In St. Mary's County, thank you. Yeah, so, um, Chris and I and our colleague Bong, um, divvied up all the playgrounds that we received in the state and went out and surveyed them, but, um, we thought this was a good example here in Maryland of, um, an inclusive play space, um, that puts all of these, uh, ideas that we just talked about together. So unitary surfacing, it has a ramped multi-play unit. The coolest thing, um, is accessible. On the far right-hand side near the fence, you can see, um, some sensory items, um, as well as a, um, merry-go-round that is ground level as well. Um, it has some shade, shade structures, um, and other features that we really like. And so there are ways to implement some of these or these practices that we have talked about tonight in smaller ways. It doesn't have to be a grand playground that's lots and lots of money. Um, you know, a few pieces that everyone can access and play with are, is going to be, um, really impactful and, um, enjoyable, enjoyable by all. Next slide.
So I touched on earlier how we put together a map on our Playgrounds for All website. And so here's a, uh, you know, zoomed out version of the map as well as the icon key that we put together. Uh, so starting last fall, we reached out to every county and municipality in Maryland to ask for a list of playgrounds that had accessible or inclusive features. Uh, I want to give Alex a shout out. She responded to that right away and said that, uh, Kensington was working on updating St. Paul Park. And so I'm, I'm very excited that we're here tonight talking about this. Um, after we received these lists, members of our team, uh, went out to look at each one. We didn't have a strict checklist. We know that communities have different needs, budgets are different. Um, but we, you know, had, had a few things that we were looking at. So unitary surfacing rather than mulch is important. Um, and we wanted meaningful access to all the equipment. So whether that means ramps onto some of the equipment. So, uh, people using wheelchairs or walkers could use them, sensory equipment, uh, then as well as ease of access to the playground. So is there accessible parking nearby? Is there public transit? Uh, accessible restrooms, what does that look like? So not all the playgrounds that we received made the list, unfortunately, um, as we were looking for ones that really went above and beyond and promoted, uh, full inclusion. But we made a map of the ones that we felt, uh, you know, fit that criteria and promote the most inclusion for everyone and then put together a key to, to denote what each playground has sorted into four categories, as you see here. So there's the play section, uh, that highlights, you know, ramps and movement equipment and, uh, communication boards, uh, sound making equipment. There's the rest area. So that's benches on the side, shade, uh, transportation, getting there. Is it, uh, free? Is it easy to find? Is, uh, there accessible parking? And then personal needs, so accessible restroom, changing table. Not every playground has all of these things. If you look at the list, you'll see that, uh, some have more icons than others. Uh, but these are just some standout features that we thought families would like to see at a glance, uh, as they're looking for a playground. Um, we hope to add more playgrounds as time goes on. This is a living website. You'll notice, uh, on the map, uh, you know, if you zoomed in, there wouldn't be any in Montgomery County right now. Uh, Kirsten and I. Uh, Kirsten and I are both uh, Montgomery County natives, and so you know, I would love nothing more than to uh, you know. Get some uh, Montgomery County playgrounds on this website. Um, you know, we're, and we're hoping. That when all is said and done, there are playgrounds on, in every county on this map. Um, you know, there's. There's a lot of communities that I think that would benefit from this that don't have access to one right now. Hi Diana.
Hi, I just, I thought Hadley's Playground uh, on Falls Road in Potomac was a.
Yes.
Groundbreaking, literally groundbreaking model for exactly what you're describing. Ad- admittedly in an earlier time, but is that, that doesn't count anymore?
So Hadley's Playground is fantastic. Um, that's a great question. Um, we really liked that one. It has all of the. Uh, equipment and everything else that we were looking at. Uh, it has uh, rubber tile surfacing that um, is pretty old and cracked and as. Um, you know, a, a thirty-year-old, pretty uh, athletic person, I was tripping over things uh, getting to the playground. And so we um, you know, I've talked with Montgomery County Parks and said, you know. If it wasn't for the surfacing, this would be perfect. This would make the list, but you know, we, we want to make sure it has. Uh, you know, fully inclusive surfacing and accessible surfacing.
You know, we'd be happy to put something in the chat. I don't see a chat, so I don't, I don't mean to break into the meeting and your presentation, so I'll just. Put my hand down and hopefully we can talk later, but I, I do have some questions particularly about heat and um, toxicity. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I, I think that covers it on the map. Uh, thank you Diana for your question. Um, next slide. So uh, that, that covers a, a um, little bit about our work, our playgrounds for all website. If you scan the QR code on the screen or follow the uh, link that's on the screen, you'll access. Uh, the website which has all of the resources and toolkit and map that we've talked about. Um, and then, yeah, we're happy to answer any questions or talk further.
Yes, we will have an opportunity for questions.
Kirsten and, and Chris, thank you very, very much. I, I don't know if you want to go through your acknowledgements.
Uh, we can skip the acknowledgements, but if you go to the next page, it has both of our contact uh, information if anyone uh. Wants that, we're, we're always happy to answer questions that way.
I, I want to thank you both for taking the time to go through the presentation and to really highlight, right? They. You know, there are accessible playgrounds and there are inclusive playgrounds, and there is a big difference between both. And what we had envisioned for the town of Kensington, right? We have a playground. That is, you know, built within the last ten years, that has engineered wood fiber that is accessible. But what we envisioned with phase one and phase two was to transform it from. Meeting that minimum standard for ADA accessibility into truly an inclusive playground. Something that is multi-generational, something that is, you know, both uh, um, neurodivergent and, and. Um, um, for disabled and non-disabled kids to be able to play together. You know, we've. We've looked at a lot of reports. We've looked at everything that everybody has emailed us. Um, but we've also looked at the studies that talk about the emotional and psychological benefits. That are derived from children with disabilities and their families when they have a place to play and where they can be included. And so that was the vision that we set out for, for this playground. But I did want to. Just say thank you to both of you for taking the time to join us tonight. And so Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. Um, council, do you all have any questions for um, for our presenters?
I personally don't. I'd like to get the questions from, I'd have a couple.
Follow-up.
I'd like to make eventually, but.
Okay, Stuart, did you have any immediate questions or do you want to come back after?
Yeah, just a couple of questions, maybe a question for Chris. Um, I'm not sure which of the right people is to field it. You mentioned a little bit, a couple of times about um, inclusive play surface, and it seems to me that's a lot of the, the uh, concern that's being raised. In your mind, do you have, all things being equal, uh, do you have a preference for inclusive play surfaces or? Do you prefer cork, cam- or corkine or whatever?
Yeah, so we have, our phase one was uh, pour-in-place surface, um, just the traditional. Uh, rainbow rubber kind of surface. Um, the, we are, you know, we have other quotes, right? Everything from engineered wood fiber to doing phase two with the same pour-in-place rubber surfacing. Or with corkine, which is another pour-in-place product. But the filler and the top layer product are both made from natural cork. Um, so we're evaluating all three based on feedback from the community, but to, to Councilman Sparker's question. Is there one particular that I think you guys prefer? Or is it just the kind of poured-in-place versus loose fill materials?
Uh, I would say it's, it's poured-in-place uh, over loose fill is, you know, our, our preference. Um, loose fill is, is very hard for uh, someone with a mobility disability to navigate. Um, you know, we see a lot of poured-in-place rubber, which is really good. I'm, I'm not as familiar with the, the. Uh, corking, but I don't, I don't know if Kirsten is, but yeah, any, anything that's kind of unitary. Uh, is going to be smooth and easy for everyone to navigate is, is our preference.
Yeah. Oh no, that's okay. Yeah, I, I'm, I had seen some more about the corking coming out. Um, as an option, but to Chris's point, yeah, anything that had, there isn't going to be a threshold. Um, is really critical. So sometimes um, we'll get to a playground and it has poured-in-place. But um, there may even be like a small lip all the way around. Um, there might be an entrance, but then there's like a small lip all the way around, and that's also a factor to think about. Um, in these different options, but ultimately, um, to Chris's point, the loose fill in whatever shape. Or form, rubber, um, mulch, whatever that looks like, that ends up being the barrier um, for people. Getting to the playground and playing in a meaningful way.
That's great. Thanks for the additional commentary. Appreciate it.
And I see the hand up. Is it Conway? It's hard for me to.
Yeah.
Yes, Ms.
It is. I, I feel like I'm monopolizing. I don't want to do that, but um, my name is Diana Conway. I'm. President of something called Safe Healthy Playing Fields, and we have a lot of the same goals, which is accessibility, but also safety. Um, we started as a, we are nonprofit, national nonprofit, but we started as focused on. Fields, um, sports fields that should be grass and well-maintained grass versus plastic, which has a higher injury rate. Also known as artificial turf, but um, they're plastic. So the question I have, I, I love the idea of a cork surface, but the issue with plastic fields that brought us to. Playgrounds is the common denominator of the rubber, which is usually made out of shredded waste tires. So. I know we're not talking about plastic fields tonight, but a typical plastic field has forty thousand shredded waste tires. And they lose ten percent per field per year. So that's going somewhere. So the question on um, playgrounds. You know, traditionally, I, I've, I've lived here for thirty years and Hadley's Playground has always been right down the. You know, two miles down the road from me. I've spent many, many hours with my three kids and all their friends there and seeing the different iterations. I've felt the heat, I've smelled the smells that off-gassed from the plastics and the tire. When it's eighty degrees, a hundred degrees. Um, those playgrounds get very hot. Um, which is not an, which is an accessibility issue for everyone with climate change. We're going to have more hot days and more hot hours. Per day. Um, they get sixty degrees hotter than ambient temperature. Soil tends to stay five to fifteen degrees hotter than ambient temperature. But plastic playgrounds and fields can get fifty to sixty degrees hotter. Um, and then there's the issue with playgrounds in particular of young children. They're on their hands and knees, they're falling, they're rolling, they're playing. Um, so they're, you know, young children don't know how to advocate for themselves the way a high school student does and says, I'm hot. I've got a blister, whatever it is, or my shoes are melting, which has happened in Texas a lot. Cleeves are melting on these fields. Um, so I, I would like to hear something addressing, and maybe cork is the answer. You know, you put. Some kind of um, springy surface underneath and then cork on top, but putting kids on top of tires. Tires are considered hazardous waste. If you take them and color them and bind them down and put kids on them day after day on their hands and knees. I mean, it just seems insane, and to say that's accessibility and it's good for everyone. I mean, our kids are already so front-loaded with toxicity from everything else that we're reading about. Um, it turns out that tires are the unique source of a chemical called six PPD, which is. Ninety-five percent mortality rate for the, the coho salmon up and down the West Coast. That's been a recent Washington University study that was peer-reviewed and published, and it seems very unlikely. That coho salmon are uniquely vulnerable to this chemical. The entire um, US Tire Manufacturers. Association is spending millions of dollars trying to find substitute for six PPD because they see the writing on the ball. But in the meantime, we're putting it potentially um, on playgrounds in hot pink. Literally hot, um, saying it's an accessibility thing. So I. Uh, my children are not disabled, but uh, we had many friends and children of friends who are, and I've seen the struggles. I have. Huge sympathy for the work you're doing, and I am grateful for your efforts to do this. I just want to make sure we're doing it. In the way that actually meets the purpose, um, without unintended consequences or what's called an unfortunate substitution. Um, and so I just hope that you will address both the heat and the toxicity of the materials. It's called clean rubber or recycled or virgin, but it's all the same chemicals. It's. Endocrine disruptors and PFOS, these forever chemicals in the Teflon, um, heavy metals and. The, the science has been out there for decades on what's in tires. Um, so thank you for letting me go on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Kathy?
Uh, yes, I'm Kathy Michaels. I um, live over in Wheaton and um, just wanted to uh, um. It's uh, following up on what Diana Conway just said, um, just give you some of my personal experiences. Um. Uh, when uh, my, uh, a while ago, when they, I was on a committee for um. Playground surfacing for uh, the Wheaton uh, Recreation Center, and it was really interesting because. And this is be, it was before um, Zoom came in, so all of our meetings were in person and all the vendors. Came to us in person with their samples and, um, and the, all of the tire rubber options. Immediately were, went out as soon as they would bring the samples in because of the smell. I mean, everybody got, got it as soon as, I mean, even in an air-conditioned conference room, um, the. This smell from the tire waste on the samples that they brought in was very clear. Um. There were, there were other options, you know, that which aren't being, being considered for these playgrounds, but sometimes ours, you know, the um. Uh, the carpet, the plastic carpeting, and one of the committee members actually showed how that would go up in flames very quickly. So that went, that went out very quickly. Um, but one of the main, so the, anything with the tire waste was just thrown out immediately. Because of the um, what the committee members were experiencing just as far as smelling it. And the information that we had at the time about um, the off-gassing of um, volatile chemicals from tires. Um, but then the other thing was all of the vendors who came in and with the, either the tire rubber or. There was um, virgin rubber tile, tiles or blocks that um, one of the vendors had. Every single one of them said, we strongly recommend a shade structure over the whole. Um, area because these will, the, the ti- a rubber, like whether it's the virgin rubber or the tire rubber. Gets incredibly hot. Um, and I had already experienced that with my own kids going to. There were some of the new, you know, some of the playgrounds were starting to come into, you know, where they put in the tire rubber. Um. Unfortunately, when they put in the playground there, I had to look, if you, you know, let's try to go with the engineered wood fiber. Which at the time was still kind of, um, I think they were still working, working it out. Now engineered wood fiber is much. Better as far as uh, if it's installed correctly, it's um, accessible and meets ADA requirements. But if you're, if you insist on putting in the virgin rubber, they didn't, they had already decided that the tire rubber was out. Because of um, the clear off-gassing of chemicals. Um, that they make sure, like the vendors recommended to put shade over the whole thing. Well, what they ended up doing is putting in the virgin, the, these um, rubber blocks and putting little um. Shade structures over the top of the slide, so not over the um. Uh, the cer- the surfacing and a nice big shade structure over the concrete bench areas where the parents would sit. And this has been.
I don't want to cut you off, but.
My experience is just so what I'd like you to address is the heat. I mean, a lot of the examples you show, showed. Um, had little shade structures here and there, but I've experienced with both my kids. Um, and other, you know, other people that I've been at um, playgrounds with is that these get hotter, way hotter than asphalt.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Um, does anybody else want to make a comment in the audience?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know. I can wait my turn, but I can also comment too. Um, okay, uh, so. I am a Kensington resident. I actually, you know, worked with the town to really push for these parks. Um. We have three daughters who are all very young and still very much playground age. Um, our middle daughter Victoria has cerebral palsy, so she walks in a gait trainer. Um, and we frequent. St. Paul Park every day. It is a everyday activity, is our home away from home. It is our community. It is. The people that were there for us when she was in the hospital for three months. Um, they are our people. Um. At that park, and that's where we met a lot of them from that park. Um, luckily, we live in an amazing community that. People raise their kids and they will come up to Victoria. Before the park was made, Victoria was strictly, could only be on the blacktop. Um, because she was not able to go on the mulch, she was not able to go on any structure. Um. And I know I heard about the heat, uh, since the playground has been done, we've had no problems with heat. Our other two kids run around. And I would say the asphalt is actually more hot than what the um, ground covering is at St. Paul Park. I can only speak to St. Paul Park. I do know Hadley's Park. Um, we frequent there too, but the ground covering is, is. She would flip over in her gait trainer if she tried to go on certain parts of that park. Um, which, which why I think the ground covering at the St. Paul Park is amazing. Um. It, it really has provided a space for all three of my kids to play together. Um, there were times before where I'd have to be over on the blacktop and then I'm sending someone over to find my other child. Because I can't see her because of all the things in place and, you know, she was like two or three at this time. So it has created an environment. Where like safe, where I feel like all my kids are safe, they're all together, I can see them all, I'm watching all of them. Um. I will say they fall frequent, my other two fall frequently and um, the ground cover has not caused. Any type of cutting or anything like that when they fall. Um, it is actually very padded and gives a little bit of resistance, so. You know, rather than getting a cut or something from the mulch, um, you know, I haven't seen any of that. Um. The, my main thing I think that I love so much about St. Paul Park now because of what has been done to it. Is the piece that I think Kristin, um, you were sharing about, I can't remember exactly what you called it, but the choice. You know, before Victoria had limited options that she could go choose, she is going up to new kids now. She's saying hi to kids, kids are up, you know, coming up to her, asking her questions about her device and what she's walking in. And um, you know, how can they play with her? There's multiple options. She goes to the music, she goes to the spinning thing. Um, she, you know, she goes all over the playground and really has so much more access to the choices that she makes. Um, which are amazing, yes. I just fell out of the chair, so. Um, so I, I will just say this, you know, as her parents and as. As a community and everything like that, I, I really appreciate what, stop, stop. What Kensington has done, um, in to do this and to really make this a priority for all families. I have even, so Victoria goes to physical therapy every Wednesday at a place that is very well-known in our area. And her therapist. And her therapist has actually heard from many families in the area what an incredible change St. Paul Park has been for their family. Something that's close, you know, typically we would have to drive to like McLean to go to a park at Clement, Clement John Tree Park. Or Rio does have a pretty good park there now that I don't know if it's considered inclusive and accessible. But now we can literally just walk right down the street and our daughter has an opportunity to play with everyone and, and make those social relationships that you all were talking about. And it really, it really has been allowed kids of all abilities to play together. So, you know, I'm very grateful for the town for doing this. Chris and Kristin, I, I so appreciate the push that you are doing within the state of Maryland. It's incredible work. And hopefully in the future, there's some way that I'll be able to support and help with that too. But, you know, without the ground cover and without the structures that have been put in place at St. Paul, I, you know, it has changed our park experience just incredibly and made it safer. It's made it more fun. It's made it, you know, a place that we can connect with many more people too, and we really feel like we belong. So, so we really appreciate that.
Such a beautiful comment and I hope you get a chance to look at Greenbrier Local Park. I don't know if you're familiar with that. Greenbrier Local Park, it's in Trevilla. It's just off Trevilla. It's about thirty years old, excuse me, thirty acres. It's about ten years old, but they've got a, a unitary surface that unfortunately they had to replace because it was crumbling so fast. It was going down into the stream, but there's an enormous, there's a natural grass field. There's a stream right below. There's a whole path. And, and again, I just feel like the, the Parks Department and the disability community have done incredible work moving this forward. I'm just concerned that putting in this particular surface, if, there is not even objection among the industry that these plastic surfaces are hotter than blacktop. So the coolest is water, then grass, then white concrete, then blacktop, and then the plastic.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to respond to Beth. Beth, thanks for coming. Genevieve, thank you for the comic relief, Miss G background. But Beth and Charles and their, their girls live literally five doors down from me. Same street, same bus stop. Our kids go to school together. It, for me, it really was an issue of my six year old, five year old at the time, daughter Eva, who was in class with Victoria, who, you know, we went to the park and to Beth's point, the only surface that Victoria could play on was the blacktop. The blacktop is also our basketball court. And so when kids are playing basketball, it kind of meant there was nothing for Victoria other than the walking track. And so there were days where you would see the words, walk to the park and maybe ten minutes later leave as opposed to the forty five minutes or an hour that they would normally be there. And when your five year old daughter turns to you and has the presence of mind to say, that's not fair. Why can't Victoria play? And then has the presence of mind to say, can't you fix that? Yes, and that's what we've done. Diane, I hope you get a chance to come to Kensington and see phase one and realize that we were very intentional about how we designed it, that our, phase one of ours has one hundred percent natural tree shade cover. It does not get the heat that others do.
I used to live on Meredith Avenue just off of Capital View.
I, I also acknowledge that corkine, you know, corkine does a much better job, right? It can be twenty degrees cooler as an all natural surface. Phase two is largely shade covered for the majority of the day as well. These were things that we consulted with families on. We consulted with experts on. We looked at the design. We were very purposeful, knowing that it's not just the, the ground cover, right? Slides, the, the zip line, the fire truck, the teeter totter, the little frog and the little duck. They all get hot in the sun, right? We are very fortunate that we're also a huge proponent of trees and we have an amazing tree canopy at St. Paul Park. And we have tucked this playground right underneath those trees. So and Beth, you know, that was one thing I, I, I really appreciate you saying like, my kids, your kids, all the kids from the bus stop are running around. I don't know why my kids take their shoes off. But, you know, we, we have not, I acknowledge that, that heat can be a problem. I've been to those parks where it's beautiful. They put them into big old fields, but they don't have the shade cover. And, you know, it's, it's a different experience. But get a chance, Diana, come on over to Kensington and see, you know, how amazing it can be when you have a fully inclusive playground underneath full shade canopy.
I'm in. I look forward to it. Thank you, sir, for the invitation.
Anybody in the room?
You have to go up to the podium. Just give your name and your street, just the street, not the number.
Good evening. I'm Charlie Geiser. I live on Calvin Lane in Kensington and I go to St. Louis School of Sacred Heart on the eighth grade. And this is my essay about the way for inclusive playgrounds. An issue that is usually overlooked but important to focus on is whether we should make more inclusive playgrounds for all children. Some say that an inclusive playground costs too much money to install into all schools and most playgrounds. But you can always start by trying only one piece of equipment to be inclusive, because every step matters. An inclusive playground is a special kind of playground that is lower to the ground and has wide walkways for ramps and ramps for walkers and wheelchairs. Instead of woodchips on the ground, inclusive playgrounds have boarding ground that is smoother to walk on or wheel over. The ideal material is a rubber blend or cork surface. Inclusive playgrounds are very important for children who cannot play up on the higher playgrounds because they can build cognitive skills, they can help children without disabilities find out how to treat children with disabilities. And they can help all kids have fun on playgrounds. You should make more inclusive playgrounds for children of all abilities. My most important reason for adding inclusive playgrounds is that all children can have fun on them. There is an example of this from the website Parenting Special Needs Magazine, whose goal is to educate parents about the ways to engage special needs children. The website wisely says, an inclusive playground is intentionally designed so that children of all ages and abilities can play, be challenged, and have fun together. It is important to know that all children of all ages and abilities are able to play on inclusive playgrounds. When a playground is lower to the ground, it is way easier for children with differences to play. Also, little kids who can't play on big playgrounds have more fun on inclusive playgrounds. All children need stimulation during their childhood years to prepare for them, for things later in life. And an inclusive playground is a great way to do that for children with disabilities. It can provide things that children need, including challenges, skill building, and fun. A blonde haired family who are mentioned in an article from Post Crescent has a child named Teddy who has special needs. Carrie Bornhan, Teddy's mother, explained how he loved playing with his brother on an inclusive playground nearby. Carrie was interviewed by Madison Lerner from Post Crescent and Carrie said, when he has a playground that's accessible to him, he radiates joy. He gets the freedom to play without being told, no, you can't do that, or no, that's not safe for you. It's freedom to learn through play versus constant direction. It is important for children to all feel that freedom and joy that Teddy gets while playing on a playground or built just for them. It's also vital to notice how much independence Teddy has while playing on an inclusive playground. Children with disabilities don't have the same restrictions on an inclusive playground as they would on a normal playground. It can help build up their independence. My second reason for inclusive playgrounds is that they help kids without disabilities learn how to treat disabled kids. An example from this is from Voice of Play, an organization devoted to the importance of play for children of all abilities. So that they can develop skills and experiences that they can benefit from their whole life. They send messages to millions about why play is so important. And they state that ninety two percent of parents agree that playground play helps children learn to be inclusive of others who have different abilities and backgrounds than their own. This is an extremely high percentage which show how people do believe that inclusive playgrounds, having children play on them impacts how inclusive kids will be towards children with differences. If all children could learn how to treat kids with disabilities at an early age, it helped them be more inclusive and accepting their whole life. Also, inclusive playgrounds can help with, help kids with disabilities make friends at an early age with kids without disabilities. Another source is from Eco Play Structures, an organization that focuses on building safe and inclusive playgrounds. They wrote an article explaining how inclusive playgrounds encourage empathy and understanding by having children without disabilities play with and interact with children with disabilities. Something to focus on, on this is that children without disabilities can gain empathy and understanding from inclusive playgrounds. I have a personal experience with this because my little sister Dolly has kindergarten and goes to school and loves it. She has so many friends who are all so nice to her and they all play with her recess. I think Dolly's really impacted those kids and grown their empathy and understanding. When children don't play with disabled kids, they won't know or understand what to do when they're around them later in life, what happens to them. While when kids do play with disabled kids, they can make friends with them and they would know how to play and hang out with them. Also, kids would learn how children with disabilities take longer to complete tasks and kids learn to have more patience with them. Some argue that inclusive playgrounds cost too money, too much money to itself. And there are other ways to use that money. It is true that some schools don't have enough money to install a whole new playground. But the fact is that if you go slow and take it bit by bit, you can eventually have a space where everyone can play. This is shown in an article by Madison America called, Inclusive Playground Providing Safe Place For Children Of All Abilities. Here's why that's important. She interviewed Erica Selz, who is a Wisconsin sales representative for Little Tex Commercial through Northern Recreation. And Erica said that a lot of different aspects of an inclusive playground contribute to the costly price. Things like ramps of steel, boarding rubber surfacing can be variables to the cost. So a solution for schools is to add inclusive features to playgrounds gradually. The part to pay attention to in this is that even though it will take a while or maybe cost some money, schools are still willing to put up inclusive playgrounds. Even if it's just one piece of inclusive equipment, it's still set in the right direction. Also, when you actually bring the cost into the picture, if you go slowly, maybe making a new piece of an inclusive playground equipment every few years, the cost can be spread out and much less of a debt. My final reason for inclusive playgrounds is that they build cognitive skills for children with disabilities. Cognitive skills are functions that your brain uses for various tasks, including how to pay attention, process information, and remember things. An example that shows this is from Cunningham Recreation, a website that supports making more inclusive playgrounds to help children with disabilities develop vital life skills. They wrote an article that said it's important for children with disabilities to develop and use their cognitive and sensory skills outside of school and that inclusive playgrounds are a great way to do that. This is important because kids can't be in school all the time, so they have to use their skills in other places. This could be easy for some kids, but it's usually very difficult for kids with disabilities to find ways to use their developmental skills outside of school. Also, some kids with disabilities don't go to school, so they don't get to use their cognitive and sensory skills anywhere, which could definitely have a negative impact for them. Fair Industries is an organization that cares about the passion for play for children of all abilities. They have an article about the benefits for children with disabilities get from inclusive playgrounds. It says, inclusive playgrounds benefit things like sensory, cognitive, and social skills. And it mentions inclusive playgrounds often incorporate sensory-rich experiences that stimulate cognitive development. Activities such as exploring different textures, sounds, and movements can help improve sensory processing, problem solving skills, and creativity. Something that is important to note is that when kids with disabilities play on inclusive playgrounds, they can explore on their own, which majorly develops their cognitive skills and problem solving skills. If a disabled kid can go on a playground on their own and that a parent constantly there can help them build up their confidence. Also, when kids get to be in a sensory-rich environment, it helps develop independence along with experimentality. All in all, it is important to remember that there should be more inclusive playgrounds where children of all abilities can play because they can build up cognitive skills, teach kills, to teach kids how to treat disabled children and help all kids play. Even though some say that playgrounds are too costly, if we take it one step at a time and make playgrounds just a little bit more inclusive, we could make a change. Remember this impacts many disabled kids and their parents all around the world. You would like to help with this issue, consider emailing or writing a letter to a local governor about making more inclusive playgrounds or contact your principal about making more school playgrounds more inclusive. When you make more inclusive playgrounds, it impacts many hearts.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That was great.
Beautiful. I will note. Charlie wrote that as an essay for school and your teacher, she forwarded it on to us and we happen to know her. And everything you said in there rang unbelievably true. From what it means for ki, I went over to the park. I live on the park. I went over there before the meeting tonight and saw both, you know, able bodied and disabled children who were on the little merry old round that your family and the work family helped design, right? That input, that building a committee who told us, hey, you need some sensory boards and you need these sensory pods. And, oh, kids love the little web swing, which I remember getting a picture of Victoria on the web swing, this enormous smile on her face.
I think everybody loves the web swing. I mean, it's so popular.
But right down to the practicality of it is expensive. And what we are doing here tonight is exactly what you advocated for and that is phasing it. We completed phase one with the help of the state through a grant. We are here tonight to review and hopefully approve funding for phase two, right? And we have, you know, additional plans to look at, you know, what is the future for anything else, you know, outside of phases one and two. But it takes a lot to go up to the mic. It was a beautiful essay. I don't know if you knew your teacher was sending it to us, but I want you to know it was incredibly well researched and hit all of the exact points that we are trying to make tonight up here. So thank you.
Yeah.
Chris, did you want-
And I don't know if you-
Is that Beth? Go ahead, Beth.
Yeah, and Charlotte, I just wanted to also leave a story that really, you know, Charlotte kind of made me remember from the park that maybe we'll stick with everyone. We were there and a little boy came up to us and he said about Victoria, he said, what's wrong with her? And I said, well, what do you mean? And he's like, well, what's wrong with her? Why is she, why is she in that? And I said, oh, why is she walking in a gate trainer? And he said, yeah. And I said, well, nothing's wrong with her, but when she was, when she was a baby, she got a boogaloo on her brain and that affected the part of her brain where she was able to move her body. And so she just needs a little extra help, but she can still run and laugh and play with you and all your friends and joke around and she still loves to do stuff just like you do. So some time went by and then I, you know, I see the little boy again and I see him going over to his friends and I hear him talk and he said, that little girl there, her name is Vicky and she loves to play with us, but she needs our help. Can we go help her? And they all came over and like started pushing her around to different equipment. And, you know, it just like that is the part of the playground to me that like, they learn about kids, they learn they're not afraid to ask questions, they're not pointing or, or, you know, anything negative, but they're saying like, you know, this girl needs our help and we want to be here to help her. I mean, what kind of community does that build for people? So, you know, I just, Charlotte really made me think of a story like that and it just like, you know, I just think about it all the time and what, how impactful those kids are going to be when they're older.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or from the? I don't see any other hands. Council members, did you have any further questions?
I have some points, but maybe questions for when we talk about the resolution.
Okay.
I don't know if it's time to bring it up now or is that at least-
Do it now.
Okay. No, so, um, thank you guys. This was amazing. Thanks Beth and everyone for your, your, your comments.
Did you have another thing, Kristin?
Kirsten.
Kirsten, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. Thank you, Connor. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, no, I just wanted to say thank you. I mean, to me, it's obvious. There's, it's a no brainer. I, I was already sold on the idea of having an inclusive playground and want to thank Connor for the efforts. I know this has been three years in the making.
Just about.
Um, so huge kudos to you for, for bringing this issue up. And obviously the benefits of having inclusive space are tangible. They're very obvious, right? You can hear about them. You can see them, the, the transformation for Beth, for, for your daughter. It's, it's very obvious. I want us to be the first playground for all in Montgomery County.
It has been submitted.
We should be.
Kirsten.
Yes.
Chris.
I also think though, I'm- I also think though, um, the other points that are raised about the toxicity and the heat. Issues are a little less visible, right? You're not seeing the harm that's being done potentially. And I think there are risks that need to be considered. That's why I'd like us to. Take a serious look at whether we can do the other option of corkine. Um, I don't know if there's any example of this. I don't think you had shared Connor the materials when you.
No, but I can bring up a picture.
I mean, I know it's more expensive. We're talking about the price and the cost and it's escalating if you add that.
I got lots of pictures of playgrounds.
Yeah, we have the pictures, but you know, I don't know if there's any examples of a playground in our area that uses this. To me, there's an opportunity for us to really lead and to make a difference by doing both. By making it inclusive and also addressing some of the real, what I think are real concerns, but invisible concerns. Uh, of the health risk when it comes to the toxicity potential. Uh, and maybe a little less of the heat because we do have a lot of the shading. Uh, but the toxic, the toxicity issue is a real thing. So.
So this is corking that you see on the ground cover here. This is its natural color. It's the only, it's the color of cork. Um, this is installed at King Park, which is in Hyattville, right off of Route One by Franklin's, if you've ever been off that way in the Arts District. It was actually also installed by Playground Specialist, the same vendor that we use. Um, in going around, it's, you know, it's been installed for several years now and, and. You know, going around and kind of, I wouldn't dare call myself an inspector, but looking at it. I mean, the only thing you see is a slight colorization, coloration change. From the places that have had more direct sunlight versus the things that are shaded underneath different apparatus, but there were no breaks, there were no cracks. Um, it's got bounce to it. So it's made up of, you know, typically about five inches of. Um, the under, like the filler, which is all cork product. And then there's a top layer product, but like all poured-in-place surfaces, there's still a binder that has to be used to bind it together. It is, it was extremely durable at all the corners, you know, it's pliable, you can shape it around and, and. Um, you know, a, a, all the equipment that you have. Playground Specialist can certainly do this for us. Upsides and downsides, it's, it's more expensive. Um, we have different price quotes. This ground cover alone is roughly eighty-five thousand dollars more. Than the pour-in-place surface that we use in phase one for the exact same coverage area. That's just, you know, the quote. From a temperature, it happened to be eighty-two degrees, eighty-three degrees this day, and it was about one in the afternoon. So. You know, for. For second summer, um, you know, it was a fairly warm day and it was absolutely cool to the touch. The playground apparatuses, so like that piece of equipment you see on the left with the metal, the metal was warm to the touch. Corkine product was very, very cool to the touch, whereas we had also been to Watkins Regional Park earlier in that day. Where, um, I'm going to show my wife looking silly, sorry about that Casey. Um, this is rainbow, uh, PIP. Um, we can do it in multiple colors. I could show you the video. First of all, amazing park. Just, it's a Wizard of Oz theme, it's truly unbelievable. But in direct sunlight, right? This was warmer. Not any warmer than any of the play structures, but certainly warmer than the ambient temperature. This was about two hours before, so maybe eleven in the morning. Uh, eleven twenty-five, exactly. But it, you know, to Beth's point, it was cooler than the asphalt. Walkway that I walked in on and, you know, I did not have a temperature gun, but just putting my hand on the surface, right? Our walking track is the warmest thing out in that park because it sits in direct, mostly direct sunlight and it's black asphalt. This was certainly warmer than the corkine products, sorry Casey. Um, that, you know, this was, I guess, two forty-five in the afternoon, but you know, peak afternoon sun. So. From a, we've also looked at all of the, um. I think it's ASTA, the, the, um, safety standards at ASTA, the safety standards for playgrounds. There's two big things that you look at with ground cover. The first is, uh, impact attenuation, so an eight-foot drop test. If a kid falls off a piece of equipment, will they be safe? Just, you know, compacted soil is a, is not appropriate. You have to have some, some level of protection. So engineered wood fiber. Um, you know, does really well on that test. PIP does exceptionally well on that test. In fact, in the impact fall and with corkine, they are all roughly the exact same. Meaning they have the same level of protection. When engineered wood fiber is installed properly to the proper depths and maintained properly. They provide the same level of safety. Yeah, there's a big study by the, um, Accessibility Council. That found that the biggest problem with EWF or any loose filler material is that. It gets moved around and, and so it has these undulations that make for unsafe movements. They make for a natural barrier to accessibility and then they require constant maintenance. Raking, watering, you know, and then refilling, um, annually, if not multiple times a year, depending on, on, you know, how popular the space is. But the other thing they look at is what they call stability. So that is, how smooth of a surface is it? So that there aren't, you know, bubbles and there aren't, um, large. Uh, increases in, in, um, elevation or, or pitch. And that's one where engineered wood fiber, it, it fails. Um, where all PIP services, you, you know, unanimously are, you know, exceptionally rated at that. The, you know, and the other one, just from a maintenance standpoint, they have a SDS test, which is just how. Does it degrade over time? And over five years? The pour-in-place surface in these tests done by the University of Indiana, you know, they all. Were found with minimal need for maintenance. Some minor cracking that all happened within a warranty period, so it would be covered. Um, whereas EWF is within twelve months, leads to be, as we know, we have EWF currently in, in the phase two area. Every year we have to refill it and multiple times a year, the crew's in there maintaining it, right down to the point where. We had two major rainstorms, maybe three major rainstorms this past August. That carried half of the EWF out of the play structure. Down the path nearly to St. Paul Street. And so, um, with these larger rains. Whereas the phase one area where we have PIP had, you know, we had to. Once we fixed the, the, um, and put in the ramps, we didn't have that kind of issue, so.
And the corkine also is more sustainable, right? Because it's got, from what you shared, I was reading, it's, um, sustainably harvested. And it also is carbon negative because it absorbs CO2, so.
And it, and it's non-flammable. There's a lot, you know, all of these things that, you know, like, you know, there's talks about like the playground went up in fire. Yeah, these are fire retardant. Naturally, yeah. I mean.
Can we consider it?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think when we get to the, uh, the ordinance, we can, um.
Yeah, the mayor asked me to work with Playground Specialist with all products.
And you all have seen the documents.
It has a higher cost. It does.
Can I ask you about the joint where the two surfaces would meet? How, how did they propose to make that happen?
So in talking to them, if, um, we go with the current pour-in-place material. Right? They would pull back and more or less seamlessly sew the two together. With corkine, he admits they will have to put in a joint. But they will make it, they do this all the time where they, sometimes they. There are playgrounds where they have pour-in-place with EWF, like little, they call them little lakes or rivers, right? They're making a design. And they have to create these, these seams. Um, same thing would happen here. Um, so there would be a small seam, but, you know, we, they, they've. Done these numerous times and it's all covered under warranty.
Is it the same warranty for both surfaces?
No, it is not. The pour-in-place, um, that we have right now is a seven-year warranty. The corkine product comes with a five-year warranty.
Interesting. I imagine the joints where things would likely go wrong.
Yeah, I mean, everywhere where there's, call it a break in the flow, so a joint. Um, the, around a footer of an apparatus. Um, you know, the only place, and it was not with either of these products, I want to say it was with another product that we are not considering, but. There are certain playground apparatuses that are like chained to the ground, you know, with fixed, they're like.
So you're putting a car.
Yeah, you're putting a hole in and it's like the cargo net thing you climb up. That, because you have this movement of the thing created a wear and tear. Um, I wonder if.
The playground equipment at the HOC has similar problems with that and you can see where they've added. Now they've replaced it since, but they used to add like fillers.
Yep.
And.
Yeah, that's a particular. Yeah, that's particular.
Yeah.
Um, whereas here, um, like I said, I mean. The biggest thing I saw, this is several years old now, but it is just this colorization issue just from direct sunlight.
But that playground equipment was actually put on an asphalt surface.
That was at the HOC.
Yeah, the HOC.
Connor, can you talk a little bit about House Bill eleven forty-seven? Playground Specialists, uh, compliance with that legislation?
So in twenty twenty-four, the state of Maryland took up this issue and they looked at playground surfaces. And wanted to create a standard for what was a, a maximum allowable. Um, as far as the components that make up these pour-in-place surfaces. And so they looked at specifically lead and they looked at other, um, PFAS chemicals and they set standards by which. All of the, um, you could no longer install a playground surface that did not meet. Or was better than the maximum standard set by the state of Maryland. So Playground Specialist. Who is the vendor that we have used, took their three products, corkine, rainbow rubber, and, uh, the PIP. And sent them all off to an independent testing laboratory. And all three of them passed. All of those tests. They, they passed the fall test, which was not part of the chemical test, but they passed all of those chemical tests. Um, and, you know, the letter that they supplied us with was, hey, here's what we did, here's the lab we sent it to. And that, you know, we have verified independently with another lab that. All of our pour-in-place materials meet the standard set by the state of Maryland.
Thank you.
We have a state delegate here. I don't know whether he wants to, did you do anything with the playground?
I am a big fan of the cork. Your chemicals, the better.
Okay.
There are a few hands up. I, and that's other questions. So, thank you.
Yeah, no, I'm ready.
Okay. No, um, I'm really not taking any more questions. If you've already had an opportunity, if you've not had an opportunity to speak, I'm happy to take another question. I think we have the information we need. We're not actually going to vote on it right now. Unless you want to, I can bring it forward. If you want to go ahead and do that now, we can bring that ordinance forward. We're waiting for momentum going.
Some people may still need to have dinner tonight.
All right, where is our ordinance?
It's number two on the other side. R seventeen.
Twenty-five. Okay, I've got it. Great, um, well, we can, uh. How do you want to do it, Matt? Do you want to just make an addendum to if we're? I mean, am I hearing that, uh, if somebody wants to make a motion and, and a.
So.
Addendum to them?
Yeah, we can amend the resolution, the cost amount to evaluate the cork. Uh, to the price, I think it's what?
And I also just say, um, I will obviously support that, but if we're concerned about the budget. I know there were concerns raised about the phase three placement and the. Where it will go, kind of coming into the circle of the, of the asphalt. Maybe it's, maybe something we revisit, just on the placement of that or even the size.
Yeah, I think phase three would have to be rethought.
Yeah, it might save some money from that, that we were going to allocate anyway for the phase three, so. Maybe it wouldn't be much more of a.
I'm one hundred percent open to reevaluating phase three for another reason, if I can throw it in, which is. So phase three, um, is the idea of moving. Building another part of the playground, but what we call inside the walking track on what is the field now. And there were some really cool apparatuses that the families identified. But one other thing that was identified for me through the research, through Kirsten and, and Chris. Through Charlie, your comments is that maybe the idea and the budget. That we put together for phase three, you know, part of it is to now look at corkine, but if the other is to look at. The makeup of the play apparatuses that are in the phase two section. And maybe make some really thoughtful, um, changes with the help of our family committee. Of taking some things that are not inclusive now, uh, maybe moving them around or. Taking them out and putting in something inclusive. I know like the duck and the turtle are beloved, the turtle has. Not been there for a long time. And there may be things that, to meet that idea of incorporating the inclusive. Uh, apparatus with the existing apparatus so that we have this flow of, of play area for all kids.
How does that work though, if you put the corkine down and then you start changing out a apparatus?
I would recommend not doing what I would refer to as the WSSC approach. Um, and instead.
You put it down and then tear it up?
If we were to approve the budget for corkine tonight. That. As of right now, we know we wouldn't even be on an installation schedule until spring, uh, for twenty twenty-six. So to then go back to the vendor with that idea and redesign the elements that would go into. Um, and then maybe, it just may mean, Charlie, your point of phasing and delaying, you're going to see a little strategic move here. Maybe we. Uh, time it all up for July one, where it's on our fiscal year changeover, so we have the budget, we have it, we had set aside in fiscal year twenty-six. We also have the budget for phase three in twenty-seven and we kind of work around our, the timeline of July.
So are you saying not spend any money this time, this budget year?
No, we should.
If we can, if we have the budget, Matt. This is eighty-five more than what we had budgeted.
So my concern is, what, what do we do with the material we have now?
That was my question.
That is the biggest concern I have. If the council decides that it's not acceptable, why are we keeping it? It was given to us through a state grant. Are we going to have to return the funds if we switch that over?
Oh, that's a good point.
There's a lot of questions we don't know tonight.
No, I will say a hundred percent.
We won't have to return the.
It's the spirit of a, it's the spirit of a accessible playground. It is not, you are not set in stone with.
The particular product.
Would we be penalized on a future grant from Community Parks and Playground if we were to remove a surfacing that is less than a year old? That is approved by the state of Maryland.
But that surfacing is replaced every year. Oh, I don't, I'm not advocating to remove it, just phase two.
That's, that's the install. And, 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 yes, it would have been great had we known about the corkine.
I thought you meant because some of the playground, the existing playground in phase two area.
I'm still concerned because of the joint.
That's what I.
I, I, I am. And we, I don't know enough without talking to Jeff. Um, I, I am. I mean, we spent a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars six months ago to put the surfacing down that is approved by the state of Maryland. That is okay and safe. And now we're saying it's not. And we're going to spend even more money to put down another surfacing that has less of a warranty on it. I think we have a lot of questions.
So maybe we.
We, we have a lot of.
This and give this to staff to go back and, I mean, it, it would. Delay a spring start, but we're not, we're, as the way you've been talking, we want to push it closer to the next budget year anyway.
If the vision of bringing additional inclusive apparatus into the phase two area, the existing current. You know, playground area, uh, that the one that has the EWF right now. Um, I will say, and I will go on the record saying, Matt, I agree with you. We, we have looked at this for two and a half years. The pour-in-place surface that we have in phase one, I feel one hundred percent comfortable with. And outside of maybe Beth, I, I think I, myself and my kids are in there more than anybody in this room. We live. Three hundred feet from this playground. Yes, the corkine product has a lower surface temperature, but we also have a phenomenal. Tree canopy and shade structure and if, you know, in time, we can add shade apparatus. I think the surface that we have in, in phase one, I think would be great. I understand that there are. Either concerns or desire to use to look at a more natural product. I'm, I'm open to that. But. You know, I also think, guys, realistically, I, I really, the, the surface that we have in phase one is great. It is like the standard. It is the gold standard in the, in the state.
I agree. I, I agree with Matt. I think, I think there's serious concerns about the joint. Um, that is a significant area of distance.
Yeah.
Um, and, and if we start to mix materials, I'm concerned. And not to mention the warranty, that is a significant amount of difference and this is not a cheap decision. So I think to some extent, the horse has left the barn a little bit on this. Um, I'm not saying that that's, should be the dispositive factor we weigh, but I think. I think. I think. What we know, the state has has set a standard, we've met that standard. And we've documented that standard. I think it's sufficient for our purposes here.
Just to throw this out there, phase three, if we get there, uh would most likely be separated in phase one and phase two. Maybe that's where we go with the corkine materials uh and and come back in a few. I don't know. I mean. I'm very concerned. There's a lot of money that we put to this park and now we're saying that it's not okay. I'm concerned. Um we don't have a ton of money in our parks to make a mistake on this. Um the joint team concerns me. We don't have enough information from Play Specs or Jeff. Um you know, maybe maybe we take a step back and try to figure out what we're doing before we move too fast.
Can I just add, Matt, too? I think phase three, Connor, right, is in the set's inner inner ring. That's more sun drenched.
Oh, the hundred percent.
Yeah, and so, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
So that would might be, that might be the atmosphere where we'd be saying, oh, there is no shade here. Any shade we create would be years down the road and therefore the surface might need to be different.
Mm hmm.
But phase two is very shady. I I don't know, seventy percent shady.
Yeah.
Um and so I think the temperature concerns is is much less with phase two.
Okay, Charlie, if you want to, just you have to go to, I know, sorry.
You can ask why we gave Jared a pass. I'm sorry, delegates home.
So I'm, so if the uh sorry. So what would the plans for the different kinds of inclusive? Um I don't know how to say like, 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 you know, that you're, yeah, like. Like, what would those options be instead of like the like?
Yeah, so phase three was initially like the big feature there was what they refer to as the pirate ship. It's this ability to go on. Um I probably have a electronic way to, I can put it up, but um you know, I will put it up electronically. Um. It is multiple different apparatuses, the spider web, but a pirate ship that you can roll a mobility device on, whether it's a wheelchair, um a walker. And it it rocks back and forth and with benches and I've I've used these in a number of parks, both here and in Mississippi where my wife is from. Um and it is, it's really cool. And you know, I gotta say, it was kind of number one. On the list from the parents committee that helped of like, hey, when we go to a park that has this, this is where everybody plays. I'm gonna put it up. Sorry, I'm doing two things at once. Um I'm not sure that one. So so your point, Charlie, is, okay, if we, and these are computer renderings, I just want to say, the computer renderings. Don't show any trees. Um that's so that they very clearly show the pieces of equipment. So this is. Over here, this is what we refer to as phase one. This is complete right now to about here. Uh with the pour in place surfacing and these pieces of apparatus, right? A sensory pod, um some sensory boards, soundboards. The in-ground merry-go-round, um and then the swing set bank that uh Kirsten and Chris were talking about. As well as benches and and other things for for parents and caregivers. Phase two is this, this is what we refer as kind of our existing playground, but it has engineered wood fiber. Um right, this back left, oh man, you would. But just only because the mayor asked.
Yeah, okay.
So back here, you know, we have our little fire truck and the teeter totter and we're just talking about phase two is just to replace the ground cover. Phase three is this part here. We have a walking track. That you see here that goes around and this would be what we refer to as like inside of the ring, inside the walking track. To council member Sparkers' point, there is no tree uh uh tree canopy covering this. Um except for like in the very late evening, um when the sun is kind of setting. So this is direct sunlight. If we were to move forward with phase three, agreed, a product like corkine that has got a lower surface temperature rating, to Charlie's point. If we were to move the budget for these items and therefore maybe not do a phase three inside the ring, what would we do? Well, that's where we're going to need help from you and you know, the works and your folks of. Hey, what might we put in over here? Because I will say, this is one consideration from a budget standpoint. The corkine product itself is like a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. And that's without the timbers and that's without the base fill and that's without all the other stuff it needs. It's like a two hundred and ten thousand dollar quote. To do corking. Um it is, it's just, it's a premium product. It is expensive. And does that mean it impacts what we may do in phase three?
So more than like, we've been at this for an hour. Uh we do have other things on our agenda. Uh it's an important issue. I do feel like that a lot of these details should probably be hashed out between the council at a work session. I don't think this is, we're going to get any further than this because we we feel like we need to rethink this whole thing. The cost, the phases, because I it does feel a little weird to put down a very expensive. Surface and then to go back a year later and add apparatuses that may, you take something out, you replace it, but the cork is now disturbed. So that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Charlie, I'm going to give you one more.
Sorry. Um so um as you guys are talking about how the step three would be the. Like where it would be hot, would you consider, I saw in some of the pictures earlier. With the canopy over it with those, is those like an?
Well, that that is what you're seeing on 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 the on the T V is that's not our park. That's just a drawing. So our our park, as you know, has a lot of trees.
Yeah.
So I don't think a canopy would really work there because of the the tree canopy itself. So um but yeah. Um but that would be also a part of the discussion, but I think um this issue is going to require us to sit down and hash it out. Um because I don't think we can pull together uh any changes in this um resolution tonight.
Yeah, and bottom line, it shouldn't, we should not delay putting this in past the spring or early summer, agreed. So that's number one, but.
Well, the only problem with that is they do have, I mean, the longer we take, the further it's going to be.
Sure, sure. But I but I think you already said you, we might want to push it a little bit later anyway to align the budget, next year's budget, but. It should go in and it should be inclusive, but if we can work through some of these questions around the the joint and the real concerns around that, but then also the toxicity. Um I think these are, like you said, this was, this, we already did phase one. These issues didn't come up. It's evolving. The research is 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 evolving and we weren't. Pretty, I wasn't providing the information, so I didn't have that information when we were voting on this in the first meeting. So new information has come and I think we can do it right by both issues if if but, you know.
And I think having Jeff there to talk about the joint and what they can do and how.
And I'll ask him if he's got examples from other playgrounds, photos and things we can see. Um what I've shared just for the benefit of the group since it's come up um is, and I don't want to be called a liar later. This is an aerial view, Google Maps of St. Paul Park. Phase one, where we poured the P I P.
Or under those trees.
It's right here. You cannot even see our playground. There is a hundred percent tree cover. In fact, where these little numbers are is where. I don't know if I zoom in close enough. That is, that's where it is. What we're talking about here is, you can see, this is maybe. A quarter, a third, me, eh, quarter of what is there now. There's one little teeter totter that's out here in the sun. This part does not have direct tree canopy. The rest of this has a hundred percent tree cover. Um so there is some area that would, you know, have more sunlight. Than others to council member Sparkers' point, there was, you know, say at least seventy percent.
Let's give it over this.
Um and that's why I really feel like the P I P product, I mean. The that teeter totter that's there now, it's warmer than the ground cover. Um you know, but and then phase three, if if done, would be located here. And this is why we talk about like that we know has. Um very limited tree cover. I mean, really, it's only when the sun is just about setting that this gets shaded, but. So I bring that up just so maybe it's, you know, you don't want to get in your car and check it out. Now you see. Why, when we looked at it, we felt very good as far as the ground temperature issue. So.
All right, so we're gonna.
To a work session?
Move it to a work session.
You need to do anything?
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, and thank you, Chris and Kirsten. Thank you very much for coming. And uh we may be calling upon you uh again for maybe some guidance on other apparatuses that we can add to the park.
Words.
Thank you so much for having us. We're always happy to.
Thank you much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for this forum. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. He's in the paper in front of me. Well, that was actually a very good discussion. I know it took long. I'm sorry for those who are on, but um I really do appreciate it. Uh we do have Delegate Solomon here. Um I know, um would you like to speak to uh anything particular tonight? I know you you talked to Nate earlier today and and he said you might stop by um.
I invited Delegate Solomon to come and wanted you to maybe say say a few words about the recent pedestrian tragedies.
Yeah, um well, first of all, I just want to say thank you. Um you all have been just absolutely wonderful partners um on everything state highway administration related. Um obviously, our community is bound by. Several very large state highways um that were designed in a in a time when the community looked very different. Um and we are uh constantly trying to play catch up. Um so appreciate the partnership and I just, I want to recognize um. Obviously, we had two really terrible tragedies um within the last, I guess now it's been about two weeks. Um obviously, uh you know, James Anderson and then um. Miss uh Praja Bhati, who was also struck and killed uh in in the Wheaton Central Business District, in addition to. I know we had another four or five uh community members who were uh were killed tragically on roads over the summer. Um so, you know, I think, uh I know that the council has seen and I hope it's been making its way around the community as well. Um. The District eighteen delegation put together a letter sort of outlining um you know, next steps. Uh in specific on University Boulevard as well as. Really what we think are a whole host of really positive steps that the state highway administration is either currently undertaking in the Wheaton Kensington community or. Has recently gone in. This includes, um so there's a lot of stuff in here, so I ended up on my phone. Um you know, things like. A new signal on uh on Beers Mill Road at um at Pendleton Drive. We have a recent. Added signal at Beers Mill and Norris Drive. Um we have a new signal that's coming in hopefully at the end of this year uh at Price and Georgia. Um in in downtown Wheaton and a whole host of other areas where we're going to see new speed cameras going in. Uh we're going to see a reevaluation of school zones on Beers Mill to accommodate. To better accommodate the Newport Mill and Einstein communities. Um and we have made changes on the University Boulevard, but to a certain extent. Um you know, for every one intersection that we make an improvement to, uh there's probably ten more that could use it and a new stretch of road that needs to be reevaluated. And this one is particularly painful because many of us have been advocating. To to make changes to this road for a long time. Um we did see some improvements. We had uh speed cameras that went in. I think as most of you know, the police department typically rotates those cameras. So the cameras that had been on the western side of University Boulevard near the St. Paul intersection uh had been taken out probably about six or eight months ago and we're in that rotation. There now, thanks to our team efforts and I can see there in our back, it looks like a spaceship. Um but uh I will say, you know, kudos to the M P D. Um their whole automated enforcement program is actually. Almost completely different. Um new staff in there and so they committed, they just actually signed a new contract. They are now essentially sole sourcing. And running the program themselves as opposed to before, but they had a vendor who was doing everything that frankly was doing a terrible job. Um I won't go into the more details, but there's apparently a significant amount of uh of fines and fees that they're waiting to be paid back. So the county has decided to go and do it on their own. And they just received their first batch of cameras literally this past week as of October first and that intersection, that location was literally the first place where they put a camera in. Um we had also worked with S H A to narrow the lanes, to lower the speed limit. I think at one point, the speed limit on the road is actually forty five. It's now thirty. Again, all that's to say, it wasn't enough. Um and so, you know, we uh we have. We have had a long meeting, we had a long meeting last week with the District three team uh of S H A to sort of talk through. Um potential changes to that stretch of road. Uh I had a conversation with the state highway administrator who expressed to me his concerns and to make sure that he knew, we knew. That it was on his radar as well. So there's a couple of things I won't go into a tremendous amount of detail, but certainly on the table are additional hawk signals and protected crossings. Specifically at obviously St. Paul, but along that entire stretch, even if you put a hawk signal in at St. Paul. And there was actually no additional signalized crossing on that stretch of University Boulevard until you hit Valley View, which is where you turn into the mall to get to uh to get to Giant.
I think like three pedestrian crossings up till you get to the mall.
Exactly, exactly. Um you know, so we are in discussions on additional signalized crossings in addition to the hawk signal. Um there's a an ongoing discussion about, and I know the town has been really engaged in this. Potentially reworking the sightlines and actually the geography and geometry of that. Stretch of road, which obviously, you know, regardless of whether you're a pedestrian or in your car, the sightlines are terrible. It's really hard to get out of uh out of the town over there. Um the other piece that they're considering is something that, you know, I think many of us have been in conversations with for a long time uh is some sort of a road diet. And folks will remember the pilot program on the other side of university uh from Georgia east.
They should have started on our side. It would have been so much easier.
I I don't disagree with the mayor. I wish we could go back five years.
Yeah, sorry.
But uh you know, so that original pilot was, the plan was to have that continue. Through Georgia, through the other side of university to connect into the trail network and into the town. Because of concerns and issues on the other side with a a very different group of engineers, frankly, at S H A, they wound up pulling that pilot program out. But there are still plans in the works. Um and so they're in a very preliminary conversation. Our hope is that we will have some kind of a public town hall. Either shortly before Thanksgiving or shortly after where S H A can sort of share more of their plans. Similar to, you know, I know some of you may remember the Harbors incident that we had at Saul. The plus side of that was it led to a complete reconstruction of that intersection, which is nineteen day from what it was before. We had a community meeting where S H A came to the table with ideas that the community could react to, or the community could share their thoughts on. So it wasn't just a, we hear you, we'll get back to the drawing board. It was actually, we we know this is a problem and we're working towards solutions, so we want to give them a little bit more time to bring those solutions. To the table. Um we want to make sure that community members have an opportunity to be heard. Um you know, obviously, we're all heartbroken. Um and so. You know, again, our uh our our love uh goes out to the families. Um it's just. Unspeakable. Um and so we're going to do everything we can. We know the state highway administration feels the same way. We know you all feel the same way uh to make sure that um. This does not happen again. Um and that we do everything we can to make our roads safe for everybody, not just. Our our kids, but uh seniors, anybody who's walking and frankly, anybody on the road. Um you know, this uh e- every collision, every collision is is just. An opportunity for for lives lost, whether it's in the car or or on on foot. So. Um appreciate the the couple of minutes and again, appreciate the partnership and happy to take.
Well, I was up Wheaton today this morning and I was probably around eleven thirty coming back towards Kensington. And let me tell you, I was probably with about. Ten other cars, you know, kind of get. Brake lights coming up to that speed camera. I mean, everybody was like, oh, they know it's there now and they were slowing down.
Well, and I will say, you know, the so. This new program that the county is is running will allow them, they purchased more cameras, which is a major positive, so they won't have to rotate as many because while. You know, sometimes the cameras are rotated to sort of keep drivers on their on their uh on their toes. Cameras are a safety feature. Um you know, when you look at what we've done on Connecticut Avenue from the circle with D C all the way up to the university split. Yes, there are a lot of cameras, but when you talk to folks in the Vision Zero office and in M C dot. The change in patterns of collisions, it's it's stunning. Uh Wade uh. Wade's last name, Wade Holland, who was our Vision Zero coordinator for the county, told me, he almost didn't believe it the first time he looked at it recently, that it was like. Down to zero in terms of collisions and that's because those cameras are there permanently. Obviously, a complete restructuring of Connecticut Avenue would have cost billions of dollars. Um and so. Cameras are, you know, a not perfect solution, but they certainly help. Um and so now that the now that the county has a a more robust camera program, they will be rotated as much. And we have made it clear to them that we do not want these cameras rotated anymore. Um and so hopefully that will continue. We also have. A piece of legislation that I sponsored uh will allow more cameras in more places on sort of the high incident or high injury networks that the county has. So they're sort of the. The, you know, ninety locations or so in the county that even though they account for only about three percent of the roadways in the county, they actually account for about forty one percent of either the fatal or near fatal collisions. So it gives them the ability, gives S S H A the ability to say to the county, we're good with you placing them on these roads, even if they're not carved out. So some of you may know who have studied this stuff. Not every county is authorized to have speed cameras and they are only authorized in very select locations. Montgomery County is a little bit more expensive than most, but it's still fairly limited. Um so that passed and then another piece of legislation that went into effect as of October one is a graduated fine schedule. So clearly, if you're going forty miles an hour and you get a camera ticket, you should not get the same ticket as somebody who's going twelve miles over. And you know, I know the mayor was at our press conference. I just have to reiterate this for the thousands of people who are watching. You do not get a speed ticket unless you are going twelve miles over the speed limit. So these are not revenue grabs and a twelve mile and. So these are not revenue grabs and a twelve mile an hour speeding ticket, twelve, it's twelve to twenty, I think, is literally forty dollars. So this is not a revenue grab. We are not D C. I admit, I think I got a speeding ticket recently going ten miles over. D C's laws are different. It was over a hundred dollars.
Yep.
Um, so we are not the district. This is not a revenue grab. This is about safety. But if you are going forty miles over the speed limit.
You're gonna get a big ticket.
You deserve to get a four hundred dollar ticket.
But you're not telling people to go twelve dollars per hour.
No, no, I am not. But if, again, you have a slight itch in your foot and you're going six to ten miles over, you will not get a ticket.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, go first. Oh, just real quick, I went to say thanks for coming and doing all that because I was gonna try to give a summary of what we talked about today. But um, one thing. Delia Solomon and I talked about was this idea of the town hall and I know that um it's gonna take a little bit of time to put it together. I agree, it should be a public forum where people can. Express their concerns, their views. But then also wrap it around the the proposed schematics or whatever of this, what the road diet or lane diet will look like. Because we know that they've done what they're doing or they've done the study. So hopefully they can have it around that, but. I know there was some question about whether it would be at Einstein or maybe Town Hall. We offered Town Hall. I said, why don't we just do both? Because we, people from, you know, from Kensington Parkwood community will probably be more likely to attend here. Um, so that was the one thing. And the other thing was that I did ask Jared if he thought it would be beneficial if we still sent a letter. And and I think the answer is yes. So.
Okay.
I think we could, yeah.
Just to Secretary Pine or?
Certainly, yeah, certainly can hurt. Yeah, and I know the, you know, they uh, he has been copied on uh or has been the recipient. But number of the emails that we've been copied on. And again, I had a separate meeting with him about something else, but it was a couple of days after the tragedy and he actually unprompted said to me. I know what's going on. This is terrible. We're working on it. You know, let's set up a separate meeting. Fortunately, we literally had already had something on the books with the the District Three folks.
Right.
It's clearly, you know, I I think I talked to the state highway administration probably more than any agency uh in state government lately. Uh, so. You know, the reason we wanna, we wanna wait on the town halls and Nate's, to Councilmember Angel's point is. We wanna, we wanna give them the space to have something that the community can react to.
Right.
Um, and so, but they are very clear. They don't wanna make any decisions until the community has had an opportunity to really vet things and make sure that that they feel like they're a part of it.
Okay, well, I will, I will leave it up to you. We will make this building available, but it'd be up to you and S H A on whether you can handle two meetings. Uh, I mean, seriously.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a busy time of year, um, you know, before Thanksgiving. So um, you just let us know.
Yeah.
We're there to support you. But I do feel like the, you know, the Einstein community especially. It should be a priority at this moment.
Yeah.
And um, I know, um, you know, James went to Wheaton, but he lived in that community as well and attended school in that community. So I think that's more important than, you know, ours and um.
Yeah.
But, you know, we could do a follow up later if necessary.
Well, I mean, and the, you know, the thing that I will, I will give S H A credit, S H A credit for, and, you know, again, why this sort of hurts even more for for a number of reasons. Is we had just had a uh the Wheaton Urban District and the Mid County Advisory Board convene a meeting literally ten days before. To specifically talk about Wheaton Kensington issues and it was driven a lot by some of the local P T As. And so we had a long extensive conversation. That's where a lot of the the more recent commitments came out of this, things we had been talking about. But we got, you know, it was a very collaborative meeting between the community, the delegation. The county, the police and state highway. So we sort of had all the players on Zoom together to make sure nobody could point fingers at one another. And there was very, uh, you know, a lot of collaboration. And so it's just, again, for every ten things we get, there's one that we don't and.
Right. Well, I appreciate the amount of time that you put into this, cause I know we've heard from Rock Creek Palisades, you know, supporting on Connecticut Avenue further down. Um, I mean, these are your roads and, but we want, you know, we wanna be influential. We wanna be helpful as much as we can. So, um, but I know you you're putting in the work and it's not easy. And there's, you know, I mean, unfortunately too, it's like the playgrounds, there's, there's not enough money.
Yeah.
And that's a hard thing too, cause it's not just our community. It's the entire state of Maryland that we're trying to make sure people don't get killed.
Yeah.
So we have to think of that too.
Thank you very much for your advocacy. We really appreciate the quick action. I immediately, to Mayor's point, everybody. Was like, there's a bunker. Have you seen the bunker they put in? And it's, sometimes that's just, you know. Uh, being conspicuous is helpful. So we really appreciate that and I will carry that back to the committee um and and the folks that reached out.
No, I I actually got text messages from folks. So I guess it was this weekend uh because to the police department's credit, they've also stepped up enforcement.
Yeah, we've seen them. Yeah.
Uh, that Chief Yamada uh made clear and I got text messages from people saying, why is everybody getting pulled over on Flyers Mill and and University? And I said, because you've asked for more enforcement.
Because you're running stop signs at a park. That's why. I cannot. Thank you enough for the work that guy, I mentioned it when we were walking in, that I knew we didn't ask for it. But there, the amount of enforcement, I'm gonna use St. Paul Park as, but like around that park, day and night for the last week has been amazing. Now, a lot of it's warnings right now.
Yeah.
But the point is, it is bringing attention to drivers that they are rolling stop signs. They are accelerating out of a stop sign too fast, or they're just flat out speeding. Um, and and I cannot. Tell you how welcome the additional enforcement is. Um. A a couple, Stuart, anything more?
No.
Um, a couple of things for me. Again, I'm gonna act quick, cause you do deserve. Thank you for your advocacy. Working with S H A is difficult. Every partner that we can get matters and you have been an amazing partner. And so as the messenger, I am going to pass this through you, which is. One frustration that I just wanna make sure we air is that. We try very hard here and I know Nate, you know, Stuart's from Duke, Darren before them, for years working with S H A. On issues and priorities around the town where we see safety and built infrastructure problems and we bring it to their attention. And it takes literally years, years. And then worst of all. When things finally get to a point where they are approved by S H A, then they go into a queue. For delivery or construction, which in itself is like five to seven years long. It is unacceptable. And what's worse is that we sit here and we tell them face to face. If you guys don't do something, it's gonna result in tragedy and that is the only time you're gonna take action. And now we're here.
Yeah.
Now it has resulted in tragedy and I'm appreciative of the immediacy of returning the the police camera. And the timing that that came with the escalated fines and the improvements that the county now has more tools in its tool belt. But S H A, and I know it it's the whole state and I know our engineering group and and what they do with P G kind of, maybe it's just too big. But it takes too darn long. It just takes too long.
Yeah.
Um, the second concern I have is, and it's more a question. I have not been able to figure out. I looked at the high injury or high impact network map. It is Connecticut Avenue south of the town. It is Connecticut Avenue north of the town. It is University Avenue east of the town. But the actual town, even though it's still state highway roads, is not. A part of the H I N network. Is there, can you figure out why that is? Is it because our speed limits are lower or traffic?
No.
Yeah, I get to the question like, why is our, why is there a car out for the town?
So, well, let me, let me, let me go, let me respond in two ways. So there is the high injury, there was the network that. Sort of the, forget exactly what the state highway administration called it. It's like their priority pedestrian areas. That is the state highway administration's designation and they do that based on a number of different factors. The county's H I N is solely, I believe, based on the places where there have been collisions. So it is solely, and you may wanna, you may wanna double check, and certainly we can double check with M P D and I actually have, I don't have it with me, but. Um, we have like a four or five page data sheet. We haven't worked on the bill for a little while, so it's not fresh in my mind and I believe that has the criteria in it. But I I think it's solely based on the number of collisions that have happened on roads. And so they literally just take the, you know, of the. Eight hundred locations across the county where there have been fatalities or injuries or collisions, whichever locations have the top. They have a cutoff of the top five percent and the other eighty locations where where they have them.
Okay. Um, and then the next is.
And again, that's only to allow, that gives them the ability to put cameras. Not every H I N location. Was a place where they couldn't have put a camera before. So, for example, uh, and I always get these mixed up. It's like, you can either, I I can't remember. I think you could put it in, you can put it in a visit, in a residential neighborhood, but you can't put it in a business district. So there are certain H I N locations where there have been serious incidents and because it's technically considered part of a commercial district, you can't put a camera there.
Which would make sense for why we, cause though where those roads all converge is our quote town center.
Right.
Um, okay. Uh, I'll, we'll double back on that with you. But then the other one is just a consideration, cause I know you worked on this as well. You referenced the accident at Saul and Connecticut and quick action was made and I know. Uh, Chevy Chase View also advocated to get a camera installed there, which is there now, right, for northbound. But there was a issue, I know when we were working with them, cause we were collaborating on, hey, we'd also like to see the, just the roadway speed limit.
Yeah.
Reduced.
Yeah.
But apparently there's an issue that you couldn't put the camera in and reduce the speed limit because the traffic study that was done to. Approve the camera would have been, would have been invalidated. So. If somebody wants both to reduce speed and cameras, why can't we accomplish both?
So I think you can. It's just a matter of sort of the sequencing, I think, like we were talking about with uh with the playground. I think it's gotta do with the sequencing. So they have lowered, you know, example on university, that speed limit was lowered. It went from, I believe it went from forty-five over forty to thirty-five and then to thirty. There are still speed cameras there. It also may have something to do, I mean, that is, I I will say, that is probably a more detailed question. I mean, it might not be a bad idea to have Chris Tipperry come, who runs the automated enforcement program for the county, who. Will literally talk about this until uh until the cows come home and be very happy about it. You will learn more than you ever wanted to know about uh automated enforcement.
He hasn't met Connor.
Oh, you guys will get him on.
About getting his fees.
Um, I, I, there is no reason why it can't be. I think it's just a matter of a sequencing or making sure that, you know, obviously. The whole point is to ensure that the camera is actually gonna be effective. If there isn't speeding there based on their study, they're not gonna put a camera there. Um, but they usually, they often go hand and glove as well. I mean, in many of the locations where we've been successful in getting cameras placed. They have also lowered the speed limit, like uh the Connecticut Avenue example. Further up, that was a, that was a question posed to the, to the state highway administration and to M P D. Let's lower the speed limit and then let's put a camera in there as well.
Last question, this goes, I know it starts at the state um laws, but then flow down to the county. Is there, what is the future ability in Maryland and then for Montgomery County to be able to do automated enforcement of stop signs? The district has now started it. It's a little patchy, but.
I don't quote me on this, but I know, I believe we passed a pilot program.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Yeah, it's not very big in Montgomery County. It's pretty small.
But it was a first step. So similar to the pilot program that we approved for um for noise modified uh for cars. I think it's the same thing. I, and I wanna say it was either Delegate Charcutian or Delegate Vlakovic Carr that was a sponsor of the bill.
Mm-hmm.
And so I don't know where we are in that pilot. I feel like it was, and Mayor, maybe you know this better, I don't remember if it was last session or the twenty twenty-four session. But my sense is that the.
I think it was the twenty twenty-four session.
Okay, the county is probably, it it also may have been caught up in the fact that, so again, Chris can give you more of the, more of the gory details, but. The previous vendor was sort of the vendor that every jurisdiction used to provide cameras, they were atrocious. Um, and so they also provided, in addition to speed cameras, they provided the red light cameras.
Yeah.
And so in severing ties with that vendor. The county, I believe, becomes, if not the first, the largest jurisdiction to sort of run their own program. From, you know, from soup to nuts, they're obviously not building the cameras themselves, but although they do have some of the technology and some of the platform construction. Um, that has opened up, I believe, a whole new, according to Chris, sort of like a whole new opportunity for the county to do different things. And my guess would be that if they haven't already started rolling out the stop sign cameras, it was probably because they knew they were in the process of changing their vendors and didn't wanna. Like, in addition to the cameras improving, they're also trying to make the, you know, the customer service piece way better. Then instead of having to go to a clunky website. The new tickets will literally have a Q R code that you can just scan and pay on your phone. Um, so I don't know where they are with that, but. Again, that's why we authorize it, because we've heard loud and clear. I mean, you know, my neighborhood, literally at the corner of our house, while the kids are waiting at the bus stop.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
People fly through. Um, you know, it's sort of a a running joke in our house. We sit in our uh in our, in our den and we watch people look through the stop sign at Ken Wake. Um, so. Yeah, I, we can check on the status of that, but it may not be a bad idea for you to invite uh either Wade Holland, who's Division Zero Coordinator, or Christopher. From uh from M P D to a a future meeting or a future work session to give you all the, all the details.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Or I can just connect you and you can give him a call and he'll be happy to, to talk to you.
Yeah.
For as much as.
I, I, I think our main frustration too has been, I don't know, Nate has felt it, is that um. The people that we work with from State Highway on a quarterly basis come and go. And then you're always starting again at the bottom to, you know, get them caught up.
Yeah.
And we just, we haven't gotten anywhere, I think, since Joe left, Joe Mokes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that was the last one.
So I will, I will, I mean, so.
I mean, I know they're busy. I guess.
No, I mean, I I, we, we share your frustration. Uh, you know, it, I wanna, I I wish I could say it was somewhat different for us. I mean, we, they've just sort of. Recently refreshed a lot of their staff, um, who seem to be fantastic. Um, and we, we have a regular quarterly meeting. Just District Eighteen with the D through, with the District Three team, um, to go through literally a gigantic one in Google Doc that we have of. Places all over, um, that, you know, again, we, we literally do not get off the Zoom until we've gone through every day. Um.
I would hope so.
So.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we did. Arts versus politics, but.
You've been on some of our calls with S H A.
Yeah.
And hopefully you have the same list.
I will always say that, you know, any, if you feel like you're not getting anywhere, you, you all know that you have four of us who will go to, you know. Go to Matt, we go to the mats for you. Um, and yeah, I mean, it's, I I wish I had a better answer. I do feel like. For whatever it's worth, over the last year in particular, there's a new, there's a new tone in S H A. There's a new energy to try to make these more proactive, to look at, to analyze our roads in a much different way. As opposed to waiting until the community raises, you know, raises a red flag, that they are looking proactively at places. Um, I I wanna give Administrator Pine's credit, that I think he has, he has tried to instill some more systems in S H A. That for years went un unbuilt, um, and frankly neglected. Um, and I, I have found S H A to be incredibly responsive of late, uh, over again. I would say probably about the last year and a half. We've made progress on a lot of stuff. It's not enough. Um, and, you know, you can't, it's hard to turn the Titanic on a dime and we've had. A decade of neglect and, you know, in action, it's not, even a year and a half of of good work isn't enough.
Yeah, cause some projects aren't just about safety. It's like we had, we're supposed to extend the queue on the turn lane at Metropolitan at our Players Mill to get to Metropolitan. And it was ready to go. And then when we talked to the Secretary Pine, he said, no, don't have the money for that. That's off the table. Okay, that, I mean, that's keeping traffic going, you know, and. So, I mean, that was a little frustrating too, so.
Well, we should, uh, we should all probably put our heads together and just refresh what's still out there, because obviously, you know. One of our priorities last year was to fix the Transportation Trust Fund. Uh, and, you know, as people are saying. An increase in the registration fees and some of the other vehicle related fees increased. The reason we did that partially was to, things are not cheap anymore. Um, costs across the board have have risen and we had about a billion and a half dollar, three to three billion, depending on the time horizon gap. In the trust fund and we have now fixed that. And so part of the reason that was so important is, yes, we wanna see new things built across the state. But we also need to take care of and maintain what we have already.
To that end, um, the October one change to the escalated fee schedule.
Yeah.
When those, you know, when automated enforcement now generates tickets and maybe they're higher, uh, you know, value tickets. Remind people, where does that funding go?
That is an excellent point. That money goes right back into, and it is actually mandated by state law, that that money has to go back into improving road safety. So, uh, and I know the county is working on, excuse me, a much more, I think, detailed accounting of some of that money typically. I mean, for all intents and purposes, it's pretty clear, the program costs X, tickets only bring in Y, so the program is not, and and the county spends. You know, eight Y on on their road improvement budget. So clearly, the revenue is not covering what they're spending on. What they're spending on road safety. But I think for transparency purposes, it would be better to have a clear accounting. But that is, again, black and white and state law, that money, it is not, oh, thank you, I have my, I have my water bottle over there. Blacked, um. Fellow parents will appreciate, you know, two small children, basically incubators of of germs. Um.
That's why you're standing over there.
We all know what you're doing. Uh, but yeah, no, the money goes, the money hack is required to go back into road safety. We all know what you're doing, uh, but yeah, no, the money goes, the money hack is required to go back into road safety. Which, again, we don't have enough.
Any other questions from the council?
They can be thanked for this work.
Right back at you all, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for the invitation.
You get to, you get to get back home in time for the Phillies game.
Oh, and, and I know Saturday is a busy day for you, but uh, make sure your kids are watching the uh, Kensington Volunteer Fire Department Parade down Kent Street. Going right by your house, you can. Yeah, they're probably rolling through the south side, it is a parade.
Well, and congratulations to the team that won the uh, that won the, the, the pull, uh, the past weekend.
Yes.
Oh, and uh, one other really related item that I was gonna remind you all of, uh, because I was on the cat team meeting earlier tonight, the Purple Line. Probably already seen it, but Jones Mill at Jones Bridge will be closed for two weeks, starting at the beginning of November for the final. Leg of the Purple Line construction for the bridge, so for two weeks.
Don't go that way.
You know, we've closed every other road to St. John's.
Yeah, so from, I believe it's the second of November to the seventeenth.
Okay.
But then.
Wow, that's, that's progress, that's good.
Yeah.
All right, thanks Jared.
Trying in the carpool chat right now? Thanks, Jared.
Can't go that way. Okay, well, we're just chugging along here. Well, I gotta take this. I know, I'm gonna take this opportunity since it's nine fifteen to do public appearances. Uh, so if there's anything that's on the agenda that we haven't even talked about yet, that you would like to bring up. Uh, this is your opportunity.
Now, I just want to say thank you because I know how hard and sometimes thankless it is to be on a municipal. Council, and I've actually really enjoyed listening to your meeting, it's been very interesting, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yep, uh, Joe?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, um. I was wondering if uh, there's any additional work to be done on the new crosswalk at Kensington Parkway and Littledale Road. Uh, this was recently uh, laid out and uh. I just wonder if there are other safety features that will be added to this, perhaps uh. Faux brick pavers or, or signage in the middle of the street, the reason I ask is that um. Uh. People, drivers, motorists come up very quickly on that crosswalk, they're not used to it either. And uh, I was wondering if there's any way to improve the sightlines, to improve the um, warning to motorists that there is a crosswalk there, a new crosswalk. The signage that exists, that has been put in place, is pretty close to um, pretty close to the crosswalk itself, so um. I just wonder if there are other improvements that are intended or planned or proposed for this.
Okay, Matt, do you have the update on that?
Do, uh, the crosswalk is temporary, it's actually just paint, um, there will be a mill and pave of the entire intersection. Uh, it is related to the mill and pave job on Hadley and Washington Street with regards to our storm drain project. Um, we're hoping to have that done later this year, and then uh, a uh, a permanent crosswalk will be installed.
Okay.
So I don't have a timeframe, we're just, we're hoping, it's related to the W S S C sewer issue we're having with our storm drain project on Hadley. So we cannot pave until we clear that up.
I know there was a stop sign uh, at Littledale if you're going north.
There's east.
South?
There's east and west cross traffic stop signs, there's no north and south.
Okay, so.
We have flagged that for our traffic engineer to evaluate for an always stop.
Okay.
But not until.
Not until.
You've done the repaving?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Very good, thank you for those updates, uh, another question, um, I just wonder if the uh, town is planning its uh. Annual street sweeping anytime soon.
Not, not right now, we're gonna move into leaf season without the street sweeping.
So the street sweeping won't take place this year?
Uh, not in the calendar year now.
Okay, thank you very much, oh, yes, Leslie, go ahead, give.
Well, um, Leslie also Wheatley Street, um, because the whole topic of playgrounds came up. I just wanted to mention, I know there is concern about the encroachment into the inside area of the walk. And I would like to see that, um, given some more attention, public caring, whatever. Um, from the people who do use it, who don't have small woods, and that's a considerable number of people. Um, and, and then I think e- everybody could have a chance to talk about that. Uh, because now you're, you're, you're maybe considering not doing that, but also maybe doing it. Um, and I, I know this is on the um. Uh. Agenda, you know, they could stay the whole thing, but the contract is for the property that's um. We've got this kind of.
You talked about the M and T property?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, the uh, number four, um, the um. Um, deed of property, um, talks about, um, if we've got some restrictive provisions, and it talks about. Permission from the village and also notice to um. Uh, an address, which I, I think is where the bank is currently located. Um, if I don't get to stay here, I just thought maybe I would just.
I mean, you think we're gonna go really late tonight?
No, we.
That's just the draft.
So.
The town attorney is still working with M and T Bank, this is just the draft, we wanted to provide some kind of draft contract, this is not a final contract, um.
I, I thought maybe that was a boilerplate.
No, she's still working with, with the M and T, this is just for something that we want at least have something out there right now, so.
Okay.
It will be final at some point, once.
Will be before January.
Yeah, before January.
Okay, um, and my third thing is, since the stop signs came up, um, I did notice on university that the um. Um, sign indicating crosswalk is literally right there where the crosswalk is, and I'm wondering if. There is a requirement that the sign be so far ahead of the crosswalk, um.
A warning you that the, the crosswalk ahead?
Mentioned about the, the signage, and, and maybe there is a requirement like a, a, a stop sign, you can't park close, you know, there is a certain. Um. Number of feet, maybe, I don't know, but um, every single crosswalk, all three crosswalks on university. Uh, you, there you, there's the sign, and you, you know, you're driving regardless thirty miles an hour, and all of a sudden, there's a not very well painted. Crosswalk.
Yeah, there's the one at Perry Avenue too at university that's really kind of, I mean, that's like eight lanes of traffic that you're crossing there. It's not too many people do that one.
I can answer maybe just to say that I know that, um, while maybe not ideal from our perspective. Just from my time on the traffic, mobility and traffic committee in P Bass, and working with some of the traffic engineers that are part of that. There's strict design standards, I think the state uses to place signage, I mean, they have to adhere by the, the rulebook, I forget what it's called right now, but. Um, I mean, that's just the way they have to do it by design standards wise, but I know that sign that you're talking about has been. Knocked down in the past, and we've actually on our walk audits have notified S H A that it's been down, they've had to put it back up because I think people bump into it. I guess, um, but yeah, that's the reason that they're, they're placed right there, again, I'm not saying that's necessarily from our perspective, the right placement, but.
Well, maybe, I, I don't know that there's been a change or something, because it, it, a little warning that there, in some cases. There are signs that say crosswalk ahead with an arrow.
I think.
Is that close to the schools?
No, I think.
There is another crosswalk that says, this is it, this is the crosswalk.
Right, and I don't know the parameters that would determine that, but I know they. You've, you've seen some where they actually put it on the, the road in front of you, so you can actually start to see that the crosswalk is coming up, so they can. Signal it on the highway itself, so maybe there's other ways of asking for signaling as they put in this high visibility crossing.
The uh, crepe myrtle in front of it's not helping me here. No. Thanks, Leslie.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks for sharing those.
And thank you for getting all those signs up, I've seen them around town, that's, it's nice, yeah. Yeah.
She's at October, Earl?
She's one of those, yes, 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 lots of hard work.
Yeah. Okay, all right, well, thank you for everyone on public appearances, so um, let's go ahead and start on any sort of uh. Reports that our um, council would like to give, Stuart?
Yeah, I would like to report on the October, um, we have, happy to report, October is in full swing. Um, you may have been driving around town, seen a number of cited, signs that we've identified, uh, with some fun facts. There are twenty-two signs uh, around town, um, like to give a shout out to Leslie and Marla and Carol, who really. Took the bull by the horns and got it that, got that um, off and running. Um, we've also set up a website, uh, that posts, uh, with a QR code that's on the board, so if. Folks want to um, submit a picture or some kind of uh, walk improvement they would like to see, we can gather that, comes to my email and I'll share that out with the council once those come in. And then at the end of the month, we're gonna select a winner and give them tickets to the, the home, the home show, the home tour. June, next summer, so, um, so we're excited about that, so. Um, there's also a, a, a messaging campaign you'll see coming out, we've worked together, uh, to develop. Some updates for uh, the town that will go on the listserv, I think we've got them scheduled for regular, I think we actually want, should be going out either tonight or tomorrow. And then pretty much weekly, um, the rest of the time, so, um, so very excited about October, and of course, we're trying to be respectful of, of. The recent tragedy, but it's an opportunity to highlight just how walkable our town is, but there's room for improvement that we're trying to infect. Um, so that's great news, and I really want to thank uh, everybody from the P Bass Committee to kind of really pitched in and make that happen. Um, second thing I want to flag for folks is our parking task force, uh, we've done a, a, some work. Um, speaking on behalf of Ann here, while she's not here, uh, Ann and Joe uh, got together with Matt, thank you Matt for your, and Alex too for your help. Uh, we have started the hard work to put together RFP. Um, to uh, potentially ask for a, a vendor to come in and do a formal assessment of our parking in town. Um, before we issue the RFP, the intent is to do an RFI, request for information out to industry to kind of give us some, to fill in some of the gaps, we just don't understand. That we don't really know. And make sure that when we do put out a request proposal, it's actually something substantive that we can stand behind and, and move through quickly, so. Uh, I think Ann has uh, provided her comments and edits on the RFP, uh, I am still trying to get through the RFI. Um, so we look to get that probably out to the rest of the council for comment, probably by next week, I would say.
Okay.
Um, and then we can move forward with the RFI, so Matt heads up, we'll be coming to you, uh, for, for putting that out on the street here in short order. Um, so thank you again for all your support on that. Um, yeah, and I want to say thank you to the mayor, uh, thank you Nate for your advocacy with District Eighteen. Um, after uh, James was hit, um. Uh, my, actually, the, 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 the woman who provides uh, my childcare for my youngest was the first uh, person on the scene. Um, and that was a very, and her son, uh, seventeen-year-old son was there as well. So that was a very traumatic experience, and so, um, I've been keeping them updated, because obviously they're very uh, interested and, and uh. You know, knew the family well, for folks who are at Kenmont, family was a Kenmont uh, pool community, so um. Anyway, I want to really appreciate the mayor jumping in and, and understanding where we're coming from and advocating for a, a forum. That is really appreciated, I think that is, is something that um, will go a long way, um, I want to acknowledge the Einstein folks who have a, a seventeen hundred. Signature strong petition uh, for advocacy on this specific topic, so. Um, while we don't represent them, we want to be good partners, and so, um, I think there's strength in numbers, and I'm, I'm glad to see. Uh, Delegate Solomon come and, and, you know, he's obviously knowledgeable about the issue, he is engaged, and I, I think. It just speaks volumes to his leadership, so I really appreciate both of you jumping in and advocating on our behalf, our constituents really appreciate it.
Yeah, Jared definitely has taken uh, taken this on uh, more heavily, so I think than the other, I mean, now, everybody's involved. But I think Jared is definitely um, kind of handling this issue, and he's done, he's doing a really good job, and I, I feel some of the frustration, but. That he is.
Yeah, it is a hard, it's a hard hill to climb.
We've been there.
So, thank you very much for the, for all the partnership, really appreciate it.
Great.
Okay. Nate? Um, I'll be very quick, I don't, I've been involved for three weeks, so not many updates, um, just one on the, on the, the. Townwide food waste collection, I know, um, we had a, a little article or a little blurb in the, in the journal. You know, we're constantly getting feedback, largely positive, I think there's some quibbles and some um, some negative feedback about the program, but just to say. Again, to everybody, we're, we're listening, we're trying to learn, we're trying to gather information, it is a transition period. Um, there's, you know, there's, there's, there's a, there's a learning curve with all this, so. Um, please keep giving your feedback, let us know how we can do things better, if there's tips, people are sharing nice tips around the listeners about. How to, you know, keep the cans clean with double bagging and.
That was a really good kind of conversation people has, very positive and, yeah, it was good.
And I think it's, it, it's gonna take some time, but I think, I'm excited to hear when we get the numbers for, for the uh, from ecology, on what we're. What we're displacing in terms of uh.
We got it, we got an invoice on Monday, but I didn't look at.
Yeah, yeah, I knew that you have time probably, but maybe by the next council meeting, we'll have a, a chance to, to dig into those a little bit more, so. That's all.
Thanks for doing that, I, I, I will get people there, it's really, it's, it's, it's good for the environment, it's good for everybody, it, it's really.
Well, the county's gonna push us to it anyway, so we might as well get a head start, and we're, we'll be pros by the time, you know, the county introduces it, you know.
Speaking of, speaking of the county, I've started to see a lot of the uh, now with the leaves just starting to come down, a lot of, um. A lot of the leaf blowers, a- all of them are, are electric.
Yes.
Well, not all.
Not ours.
No, no, I.
But I've seen all.
I, there was a, there was one in the H O C lawn when I came home and.
Okay, well, maybe I haven't seen enough, but.
Yeah, there's, there's still a few out there.
Okay, thank you.
Two, uh, just two updates, one, uh, first, just a quick one, myself, uh, council member Ingall, Mayor Furman, Matt. And Alex met with uh, Montgomery County Parking Planning, this was just the initial kind of administrative uh, meeting. In their budget for this year is to start the amendment process to the Kensington Sector Plan. The plan was, you know, last approved in two thousand twelve, but so much has changed since two thousand twelve. As far as the, the county's general plan, as well as all of the dovetailing plans underneath it, pedestrian master plan, bike master plan, um, you know, transit plan. Um, this is going to be a multi-year process, they were very clear about that with us, that. This will be a very public process, there will be many, many charrettes and public engagement meetings, um, you know, looking at a lot of data. Um, also, you know, talking with the town on, you know, the priorities that we see both from a traffic. And from a pedestrian and multimodal flow perspective, but just to let people know that. Uh, in a handful of months, they should come back to us with kind of a, you know, the beginning of a timeline. And uh, kind of a call for information, and then we'll start beginning to, to, yeah, schedule some of the initial like public. Um, information sessions, so just pay attention to the newsletter and council meetings will keep people up to date on when those are gonna start to begin. The second is just.
Not, sorry, not until well into twenty twenty-six.
This is after the holidays and into calendar year twenty-six, thanks, um. Montgomery County Public School Boundary Study Update for the Charles Woodward Cluster. Um, earlier this week, they released what is called Round Two, it is looking at four new options. This is entirely different than the four options that were released in round number one, these are just affectionately known as options A, B, C, and D. Um. Uh, because in round one, they were options one, two, three, and four.
They were very, to keep them simple. So, you noticed the two, I was like, of course.
Um.
Five, six, seven, eight.
So, here's the big takeaway, there's, just like in round one, there's all sorts of data worksheets on the county's website. There are interactive GIS maps where you can turn on and turn off your current boundaries and your articulation pattern. You can turn on each of the four subsequent options to see where you would go. The takeaways from uh, the initial meetings, the entirety of the town of Kensington is kept together in all four options. We will articulate as a town with our nearby non-incorporated areas, but the entire town stays together. And in fact, in all four of these options, our articulation patterns do not change. We would articulate, the elementary schools were never to be touched during this boundary study, so we still go to Kensington Parkwood. We would then articulate into North Bethesda Middle School, and then we would articulate into Walter Johnson High School in all four options. It doesn't mean that people shouldn't review the information and advocate and write letters about what they find positive about that. Um, for those in KP, the one thing is there is split articulation from KP. But this is largely because there is a small cap, uh, uh, you know, boundary to area west of three fifty-five.
Off Teckerman, right?
Right, um, behind Georgetown Prep, uh, Preparatory School, that is to be. Sent back to Luxman, well, I shouldn't say Luxman, that'll come in time probably, but into Tilden Middle School and then the new Woodward. Um, they were bought into Kensington Parkwood years ago because. Tilden didn't have the space, Lux Manor didn't have the spaces in elementary school, um, and there was no Woodward. So they were coming over to KP, now Luxman.
So they were coming over to KP. Now Lux Manor has had a capital project. It's kind of jumped over Gator Park because it didn't have the capacity either. So that is something that, you know, is seems to be just being moved back. I mean, these are within the Walk shed for that neighborhood into Tilden. So um all I know is for us, they all stay North Bethesda and Walter Johnson.
Went to Silver Creek.
That was in round one.
Okay.
In round one, yeah. In round one, there was one option that would have moved our middle school a- assignment to Silver Creek, but then back to Walter Johnson. Um in these four options, they are all for North Bethesda, all for WJ.
Okay.
So um there's a couple of more online sessions. The feedback window is open for a month. So you have, you know, four weeks from Tuesday, last Tuesday to uh take the survey they have online to submit feedback, you know, write an email and submit feedback. Um I would encourage that the town, just like we did in round one. Um maybe put together a quick work session and look at those four options in our letter from round one and draft a follow-up letter of, you know, our viewpoints on these new four options.
When does, when does the letter do again?
They haven't get, all they've said is that the survey will close one month from when it opened, which was the sixth.
So the letter wouldn't be too far behind.
Problems.
So if we're gonna hold a work session to talk about playgrounds, we should probably add that.
Turn it together, yeah.
Yeah, because otherwise it's not gonna.
So looking at their timeline, um which I can bring up here because I screenshot the whole meeting. Um here we are in the refined options and the feedback survey is out through October. Um you know, one month to the first week of November, they'll have, they'll close the feedback. They'll start to synthesize all of that feedback. In December, they will, the superintendent, you know, they will work to develop what will become the superintendent's recommendation to the Board of Education. That will go to the Board of Education in January of twenty twenty six. They will hold public hearings and submit uh solicit additional written testimony between February and March of twenty twenty six. And then at the March twenty twenty six Board of Education meeting, they will take their final vote on the boundary options and select what they will be. They must complete this. This is what MCPS has has mentioned in nearly every meeting. They to maintain the timeline for all of the both operational budgeting, planning and um and just, you know, like busing routes, they need to make that decision in March. So this timeline means fairly firm.
So assuming that we're all happy with no change. I mean, the letter should be fairly easy to write.
Question Connor, did they say that they had basically abandoned options one, two, three, four, and they were only gonna focus on A, B, C, and D, or these are still potential options? These are four new options? That is the million dollar question. Um and the mayor and I had a meeting with our uh Board of Education Representative Julie Yang.
Who happens to be the president.
Who is the current president of the board, to ask this very quick, because we were confused. Is it now eight options that they're choosing from? Um is it hey, as these options are presented, that's just what it is? And her point was no, the first four options were used to gather feedback and insights from the community to synthesize that, to build these new four options. Okay. So what I did notice in those is that a a conscious effort or at least a in output in round two from the feedback appears to be that islands and tentacles, as they talked about, were so untenable and unworkable from an operation standpoint. Those don't exist anymore. Yeah. It's largely contiguous areas as best they can around the the middle school and high school location. There's a couple, there's one that has Einstein basically uh north of Einstein, but goes all the way down to Silver Spring, Little Wedge. Yeah. Two, where's it very long and skinny? And I was like, whoa.
Yeah, there's a lot of like islands that they're like grabbing from and then.
But it's not like, here's one island surrounded by a bunch of other places and then going to a new one. Right. So here is the map for option A that came out just recently this week, and you'll see those tentacles and islands now are largely gone. These are fairly contiguous areas. Um we are, um I know from studying this, we are, this is our shark fin. Yep. So this is our northern boundary along University Avenue. So this is the town right here. And so as you click through each of these options, you know, there's middle school. So this is us in the like light green, that's North Bethesda. As you scroll through option B, again, you know, we we are kept intact. So you'll see from the options, there's some subtle movements. That's what was expressed to us by um the uh from uh Colin, the BOE President Yang was that that feedback really helped to just kind of subtly shift the edges, but one of the big results was to get rid of tentacles and and islands. Yeah. Um but we still asked, okay, so does that mean the superintendent has to choose from one of these four options? And her point was, well, technically, no. Because these four options now are on the table for feedback. So the feedback, they will synthesize that feedback, which is why, you know, advocating that we send another letter. For why are, you know, that the town's views of like what we really like about this and why it's important to us similar to round one. So that they hear our voice again, so that if from that feedback, they make these minor adjustments again, um that, you know, hopefully our views and and desires are maintained within that. Ultimately, it was also expressed that the superintendent can completely design an option that has never been seen by the public and present it to the Board of Ed. It has also been expressed that that would probably not go over well.
Said it would be suicidal.
It would be, so um Dr. Taylor seems to have gathered a pretty good pulse of the community and and he's been very actively engaged in the process. And so I think there may be some subtle, you know, working around the edges of the round two options. Um but case in point why it's important to advocate, you know, both your Board of Education uh members, but also you know, a letter in the MCPS group. So. Is it?
Right. Um I just want to um say a couple of things. I I want to acknowledge that the Town Council has um agreed to pledge a thousand dollars to the um James Anderson Memorial Foundation when it is um uh.
Established.
Established, thank you. Uh we also, um his funeral is on uh Saturday, this Saturday, and um the staff has arranged to have flowers sent to Holy Redeemer. Um I also want to acknowledge that we met with the Girl Scouts at six thirty and cut the ribbon on the new seed and book library outside of Town Hall. They did a great job and it's incredibly detailed on what they did as far as the seeds and everything else. So um I've asked them to um write an article for the next journal, which by the way, the deadline is October twenty fourth. I've extended it. So that will be a November, December um journal, and then our next one will not be until February. So just so you, if you have anything happening in January, you should put it in the November, December.
October twenty.
Uh twenty four.
Okay.
Yeah. Um I also want to, um I talked to Glenn Kessler from Compass. And he asked about uh looking into making Kensington an arts and entertainment um district. I told him that we would be our designation and I said, yes, we would be interested in that. Uh and it's really basically bragging rights. That's about, you know, what you get. So we like to brag.
Like to do that.
So uh he's looking into that and will get back to us, but um I think we would definitely qualify it's. So um also, I wanted to let you know that we have um Lisa Carney, our archivist, has been working on uh two new history boards for which will cover the um Mizel Lumber uh Hardware Store as well as the garage. And so there'll be two new boards. So they're currently going through a a draft period and um there was a kind of a not a big error, but we corrected one, I've corrected one. And uh so once that comes back, I'll share it with the uh with you all to look at it before we go to to print. Um uh I do want to uh recognize the staff as well as public works for all the work you guys have put into all the events that we've had um since Labor Day. We've had the eight K race, we've had the car show, we've had the Kensington Volunteer Fire Department's hundredth anniversary. And there's just, there's, this town is hopping. So uh we have a big weekend. Um this weekend, I think that we have the um costumes for pets on Sunday. And Halloween uh party for the pets on Sunday with the costumes. And then we have a a new event, which is on Lord, Lord Dev. The shopping center on Metropolitan uh is having a little festival. We don't really have much to do with it except dropping off signage. But um our barricades, but otherwise, uh this is something that the um everybody's put together. And so that is also on Sunday out in the parking lot. And um and then, of course, Kensington Volunteer Fire Department uh will be having a parade at one o'clock on Saturday down Kent. They'll start up at Stony Brook and come down. And then they'll be out on um Kensington Parkway in front of the Cabin Park uh for a few hours with all their apparatuses and showing them off. So hope everybody.
Is it showing it off or is it a truck touch?
Uh I think you can touch some of the trucks. I don't know. They have little towels that you can.
I'm standing.
Yeah, so anyway, so.
How did you just like to crawl in?
Yeah. Um and I do, uh so I want to really shout out your staff because this is a lot of work. Uh for what you guys have to do, even if you're just putting out barricades and no parking signs. It's it's a lot of work. So thank you. Thank you all. Okay, so let's uh move on uh to um the town manager. Do you have anything you want to report?
All my comments are in ordinances, resolutions and regulations.
Uh let's move on.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Already?
I do. Well, it's only quarter ten. All right, uh let's see. So we are, uh go ahead and do one then.
Uh council, before you, this evening is ordinance number O dash zero five dash twenty twenty five, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington authorizing the acquisition of certain property located at one oh four fifteen Monmouth Avenue. That is the M and T Bank Drive Through Property Kensington, Maryland for a public purpose. The public record closed at four PM this past Friday, October third. We received no additional public comments. Um a count, we requesting that the council approve the ordinance this evening. I would also like to note, um town attorney Ferguson is continuing to work with M and T's legal counsel on finalizing the draft contract. They have requested the closing of December eighteenth. This should work with our phase one uh contract that we signed uh earlier this week, where they have to go in and do uh environmental uh study of the existing property. So it should work. So I'm just referencing December eighteenth is should be fine. It's it's okay with us, staff, so.
Thank you. We'll get it set up. Okay. Uh Sydney, does the council have any questions about the ordinance?
I I do.
Okay.
Uh Matt, in section one on page two of the ordinance, it says here um that for being detained, uh ordered enacted, and then skipping down purchase price of nine hundred thirty thousand dollars on substantial terms. Align the attached contract sale, then this for uses public parking within town's business district. If we stake ourselves to be public parking in this ordinance, then we deviate for some other reason in the future, is that problematic? Or do we want to potentially broaden this to be like for the use that the town?
So I will, well, I I will defer to Sue Ellen. Uh this was discussed prior to.
Your be on the, on the.
So we are, uh there's some limitations that they asked us put on uh town attorney Ferguson, do you want to just clarify what you and Howard Locke agreed to, at least what we believe they agreed to?
You have me tuned.
There has been a concern on the part of the bank that about the uh purchase price that they would be able to obtain for the property and the fact that the parking was right across the street. They believed in um there, the main office was concerned about that option not being there once the town uh did the acquisition. So there are particular uh requirements that are now included in the contract of sale that reference this. Um and for a period of time, the town is promising to use the property primarily for parking. And then to continue that, there's a a period of time that's required, and then there's a period of time after that during which the town can decide to use it for something else, but uh has to give notice to the bank. And I'm looking at, uh there will be a another document that will reflect this that has to be recorded also. So the timeframes are that the property for ten years will be used for the pu- public parking and related uses. And then there's another, there's a restricted covenant, the period of fifteen years following that that you'll be continued to be used for public parking and related purposes unless it's terminated by the town for a compelling public purpose with six months' notice. That's to um the then owners of the property across the street.
Okay.
So that that was uh those were the conditions under which M and T agreed to go ahead and sell at purchase price without requiring the town to go through condemnation process.
I think originally they wanted what, twenty years, twenty five years?
Oh, yeah. Yes, they, I think it was twenty five or thirty. Actually, it was a very long time. Yeah. Uh so it's been talked, it's been reduced. Uh but they they were concerned again that there they would not get optimum pricing for the property across the street to which this drive-through was connected. If the parking aspect was not available for them, or at least for um substantial period of time. So we've been negotiating the amount of time.
That makes sense. Thank you, ma'am.
You want to add?
Yeah, it doesn't, but I I don't know if I ever raised this question, but maybe someone else did. It doesn't prevent us from using the surface area on Saturdays as farmer's market or vendors, right? Like that's not a uh use that's beyond.
That's a very short time.
That's what I thought. Um and the other thing was, um this doesn't preclude us from having public parking that we meter or have paid, right? Because we can still charge for it.
That is correct. You may charge for it. You can res- you can restrict it as you see fit. It just has to be public parking.
Good. And then the last question was just about the the clause in there or whatever you would call it from the old term about the um for the environmental and physical investigation schedule. It says nothing about, it says you can't do or boring unless you get written notice. I knew that we probably wanted to test it for.
Yeah, we are.
Yes.
They they give us the notice and that's not gonna prevent us from doing any of that.
It shouldn't. So we we signed the phase one on Monday contract with Arc Environmental. Uh they are putting together the questionnaire for M and T Bank. Once the questionnaire is uh completed by M and T Bank, they will go in and proceed with um their test results. They may need to get inside and do some wall samples. Obviously, they need some core samples.
Hopefully they'll let us do that then.
They should.
That's a part of the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The languages they need to give it written, they need to give us written approval to do that.
So that's within the contract, not the not the ordinance that we're looking at tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, the ordinance just allows the staff to proceed with the acquisition of the property. It's not the actual sale of the property quite yet. Uh town attorney Ferguson is working on the contract with M and T's legal counsel for that actual transaction. This is just to give us the authority to move forward and turn into the contract, yes.
Right.
The the ordinance is uh does allow also the signing of the contract of sale in substantially the form that's attached this evening. The and as noted, there may, there will be some nips and tucks in that. Um and so we've been waiting actually a bit on the phase one to make sure that it's okay to sign off on the um environmental provisions. Because if there's a phase one that's clear, then there really shouldn't be any problem with that.
Thank you.
One further question, sorry. Is there a survey? Do you have a survey on that property?
Uh we do not have an active survey.
Do we need, do we need to have one?
Um probably, yeah. Yeah. We do have it. Yeah.
Yeah, and there's a a, there's also obviously deed references. There are, there is, there there is um an actual piece of property as it's described, the deed will describe the property, but surveying out where all those points are has not been done.
Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the audience, which Joe, you're the only, you're the only audience. Oh, no comment. Oh, sorry. Sorry. No questions, Joe, sorry. Okay, right. Can I get a motion?
Is this the? Yes, I'm. Yes, I move that the town uh, adopts ordinance number zero, zero five, twenty twenty five. Ordinance for the mayor with Kensington, town of Kensington authorizing the acquisition of certain property located at one zero four one five Montgomery Avenue, Kensington. For a public purpose.
Yep, there's seconds.
Just one second for absolute clarity, ordinance, oh.
So no.
Oh.
No for ordinance.
Oh, for ordinance. I stand corrected, thank you. Do I have to reread it?
No.
Okay.
We'll, we'll take your correct.
I'm new here.
Sure.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right, two, uh, we are skipping two, so we'll go down to three.
Uh, before you receive this resolution number R dash nineteen dash twenty twenty five, just for reference, resolution eighteen was adopted last month. That's why there's a number skip. Uh, resolution number R dash nineteen dash twenty twenty five, a resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington. Authorizing the town manager to accept the proposal from Donahue Construction for the Town Hall Offices renovation project. Mayor Furman, uh, council member Crimmins and council member Spark and I met with the Donahue Construction Team. Uh, we did put out for pricing on this, uh, we received two prices for the Town Hall. Um, the prices came in at four hundred and five thousand and three hundred and thirty two thousand. Donahue was the low price that we received. Uh, staff is requesting three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from council for the project. Uh, in just in case there's any change orders, so we don't have to bring it back to council. And uh, Town Attorney Ferguson and I will have to work with Donahue on an actual contract. So please amend this if you decide to approve it pending review of the town attorney.
Okay, so that you wanna add to. I, I'm only confused because this one is on the shore, not on the Donahue.
I might have already had it written in there on this one.
You're confusing.
Oh yeah, subject to review of the final contract by the attorney. It's already in there. You don't need to amend this one. Shorbs the one we have to amend.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, I'm sorry, so I, for Nate, for your, I was here for when we met with Donahue gentlemen. They were fantastic, very thorough, very detail oriented, very, I had like high degree of confidence in their work. Um, there was a conversation that we talked about whether or not there's a, there's a, a hatch to get to the roof. And there was a question of whether or not we need this hatch going forward. There's a seventy five hundred dollar line item. Uh, which is on uh, division seven, summer thirty one on the actual uh, quote from Donahue here in the packet. How did we shake out with that? Cause I had to, I had to leave before we go through. Did that look like something that needed to be done?
We were gonna move away from the hatch. Uh, they were gonna do some decorative molding around the existing drop down ladder. Um, and kind of work around it. If we got to the point where they realized they needed to redo the hatch. Options in there, that would be part of the, the change order, just in case we need it.
Okay, so, yep. That's great. I was making sure, cause I chose to stress about that.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just have a few quick questions. So thanks for that additional context, council members. So Matt, just a question, because you say there were two bids, two?
Two, two prices. They, it was not a formal bid. We reached out to two construction companies.
Okay.
Uh. Mayor Furman, do you remember the name of the other construction company? It was the one that they recommended by the city of Rockville.
Yeah, city of Rockville.
Yeah, I, I can't remember their name. Um, it came in at four oh five. Uh, we reached out to Donahue. Donahue gave us a bid of three, was a three thirty two. Um, and uh.
Yeah, no, no, I just, it's good, it's good that we got at least multiple prices.
Yeah.
I was just curious because I know that but, when we budgeted for this in FY twenty six, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that's more than double. Wanted, wanted to know what, what the escalation was due to. And also just to note, I, from reading their proposal. It looks like it doesn't include anything around permitting fees, other engineering fees if we need a.
So we have an engineer, so um, permits are gonna be filed by the town, which is standard for us. Uh, the engineer fees are gonna come from the existing engineer from the architectural project with um, with Margaret Upton's team. Uh, the. Budget that was based off of this was off of an estimated cost of construction from the architect. Which was off quite a bit. Um.
Should we trust the architecture drawing? I'm just kidding.
Uh, my house is.
So, uh. This is why uh, it's very difficult to figure out what things are gonna cost and we continue to have problems. It's the same issue that the county's having a noise library. You go and get a price and it's not what you thought it would be. Um, and it is literally double what we thought this was gonna cost.
Okay. What is that, is it, is it come, is it come out of the same budget line?
It's the CIP. We have the funds in the CIP to cover this. Uh, it is gonna. It is gonna get very close. Uh, we do have two other projects we need to do in Town Hall within the current fiscal year CIP. It could get delayed. We have to repoint the breaking um, at the top of the building, which could go into the next fiscal year. Um, at least right now, we're okay. We can handle it. Um. So.
When, when will it be done? When is it projected to be finished?
So we were told uh, four to six weeks to start. Before, from notice to proceed. It would take them four to six weeks to generate material. Uh, and they were saying roughly about eight weeks. Uh, town staff would have to move out of the upper level. Um, we may or may not move down here. We may move over to the St. Paul. Okay, so.
So maybe by the end of January or February?
Maybe, that's, that's good. See when they start.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And they did say that it would not interfere with the use of the building on this, on this floor.
Correct, it affects the third floor only, and then Alex's office, which would be raised about two and a half feet to bring to the existing plane. Um, everything else is just upstairs on the third level. One of the playgroups or anyone that has rented the drill hall. Uh, will not affect our council meetings, um, or any of the rooms on this floor.
Which in probably, uh, definitely December, January, February will probably be on too.
Right, it would affect the parking lot quite a bit, which would be used as a staging area. There would also have to be a dumpster for the initial demo phase. Which may or may not be put out into the um, parking lot. We may put it out on Armory, which we did with the uh, parapet. Uh, project a few years back.
Right, thank you.
I have curiosity, would they stage closest to the building like where staff parks or around back?
Uh, so they'd probably stage where we park.
Yeah.
Um, that's generally where we stage for the parapet.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, we can work with that, on that. But the, the biggest, the biggest issue is gonna be the demo and then um, the window that if you're familiar with Shirley sets. Uh, if you notice from the outside of the building, there's two doors there, there's two doors there. They're gonna rip the, they're gonna rip the. Uh, drywall out there and bring the materials through there, so they don't have to try to get it through the stairwell. So. Uh, and then that will be patched back up.
Pen, but that's a perfect Juliet balcony.
Yes.
Any other question? Any questions from the audience? Uh, what does Joe have?
Oh, he says no.
Oh, no.
Thanks, Joe. Man, Zoom is putting out new features.
It's new.
They have new hearts.
It was like, yeah, the heart's going up. That was kind of cool. Alright, thank you. Aye, um. There are any other questions from the council? I will take a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution R dash nineteen dash twenty twenty five.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Give Stuart the second. Long way to go.
Did we say yes? Everybody's.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, council. Uh, before you receive this, our last resolution, resolution number R dash twenty dash twenty twenty five. Resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington authorizing a contract with Shore Landscaping for landscape maintenance services at Clum Kennedy Park. Uh, this is a longstanding uh, maintenance contract that we've had with Shore. Um, the pricing has now exceeded staff's ability to uh, approve this internally. So we needed to bring it to council for approval. Uh, it is for ten thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents, I believe. Um, which exceeds our ten thousand limit. It is for maintenance. This is not for mowing. Clum Kennedy is for.
Basically mowing or leafing.
Yeah, it's basic pruning, weeding and uh, two, two mulch chains a year. Again, this has been a longstanding contract with Shore Landscaping.
Matt, with the tree and shrub care, right, so um. Okay, so they all be inspecting all of the trees, applying the applications. Just cause I mean, like the town's largest trees and they, they are now caring for those trees.
Um, they are not caring for the trees. They're, they're caring for everything in the flower beds.
Now, this is tree and shrub care.
Um.
Once a year.
Yeah, within the flower beds only.
Okay, small trees.
Yeah, that's for the flower beds only.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I could, this is the one that um, I'm requesting a, a short review, yes, on this one.
Right, so after the, the amount of money, uh, we need to uh, amend and add, subject to review by the town attorney.
Yep.
Any questions from the council?
Just, uh, Sue Ellen, why, why the additional review? Is it because of the, the rollover period that they've got? Automatic rollover for the next year?
So I was a little concerned about that in the beginning, but not so much since you can get out in thirty days anyway. Which is something that you do want. Uh, no, I'm more concerned about um, insurance. Making sure there's appropriate insurance and additional insured, that's primarily what it is. And uh, there's one other piece in there. There's an arbitration piece on there that's not good.
Let's say, since they've taken over the park, um, we've not had any complaints from residents regarding how the park looks. The beds are, you know, kept tidy and um, you know, if you're gonna have a garden park, you need people on the ground. To make sure it stays out of.
They're, they're also doing some of the other tree work, right? Like around the median for Connecticut Avenue.
No, uh, that's a different contractor for us, but yes, we do have a contractor. That's uh, Moher and Tree Experts.
Yeah, it was Bartlett.
Cause I was wondering, is there, is there economies of scale just bundling these together? Will, will we get any discount?
Uh, we are getting a discount from O'Hare and from what we were paying Bartlett.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's a significant difference.
Right.
Yeah.
But Shorbs, I mean, Clum Kennedy is the only park that we actually have this worked on, because the crew can't.
It's a little bit more manicured.
Yeah, and they don't, they don't do manicure.
But they do.
Well, that's what, that's what uh, the gardeners in this town would call it. Yeah, I mean, or they would be filled with nandinas. It does have a few nandinas in it. Sometimes they're actually even weed, weed warriors. Uh, or master gardeners as well, but yeah. Alright, so if there are any other questions regarding this from the council? Is your question?
No, no.
Okay, anybody on, on uh, on TV, on Zoom?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Alright, could I get a motion?
Sure. I move that we adopt resolution number R dash twenty dash twenty twenty five. Resolution of the mayor and council authorizing a contract with Shore Landscaping not to exceed ten thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents. Subject to review by the town attorney.
Okay, that's an amendment to that we're currently looking at. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, last item on the agenda, I just wanna make sure, everybody, uh, Wednesday, November twelfth. Is our next meeting. Need to make sure I have, uh, hopefully, everybody. Anne's not here, is everybody out of town?
Chance I might have a little trip that week, but.
Okay, when would you know?
Um. Next week.
Next week, alright, if you can.
I'll let you know.
We also need to uh, plan a um, work session.
Yeah.
Now Anne's not here, that makes it a little tough. I know, um, she's not available next week, so I think that's what she said, so. Yeah, uh, while she's going on another trip, which she gets back from this trip, I think, so.
So we're looking at the twenty.
Well, we should do it before the twelfth, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Last week of October, maybe?
Um, you guys tell me.
The week of the twenty seventh is. Wide open.
And the question two is, uh, it would be easier for staff to do this first thing in the morning?
Yeah, usually.
Yes.
He, if it were.
Like eight thirty?
Yeah.
I'm okay.
Can we try on the thirtieth?
The thirtieth?
I can.
Yeah.
Mondays and Fridays are really good for me to be.
Mondays and Fridays are good?
Only.
We're definitely doing it.
We make a motion and staff has to be.
Well, they usually are, so.
Yes.
They usually have a theme. Alright, so the thirty first, I'm fine with Halloween. Everybody good with thirty first at eight thirty?
Yes.
Eight thirty A M, we'll do a work session and uh, I will uh. Let Anne know both dates.
Um, about an hour?
Uh.
Not long?
Well, we say that. Yeah, I would, I would, actually, I would do from eight thirty, I would just say eight thirty, just thirty, just. As a safety since if we may talk about the letter too, or review the letter.
Okay.
But hopefully, um, the letter could have already been drafted. And we're just, uh, we can just do that.
And I'll get back to you about the.
Yeah, unless on the twelfth. Okay.
Um, is anybody taking the lead on the letter? Who put the first draft?
I think you did.
Okay.
I mean, I think you could probably take the letter that we wrote and just pull from that.
Pull together something quickly bef, you know, through the weekend, so that next week, everybody can begin chomping on it, so that. At the work session.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll put it in Google Doc.
Okay, we can do it together.
Yeah, I don't think it, as I said, it should not be.
Oh, thank you. I think, I think I am.
It shouldn't be too difficult.
No.
Since we're not arguing too much, we're thanking and supporting. Alright, I just need a motion to adjourn. My god, it's.
I'll move to adjourn this marathon meeting of the town council of Kensington.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ellen.